I did, I didn't see it.
Alright, so good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the zoning board of appeals meeting of July 28th to order. Please bear with us because obviously, thank you Aziz, our, another member is joining. Actually, let us start with the roll call now that Aziz is here, so.
Aziz Anson.
Norma Drummond.
Rocco Limetone.
James Meyer.
Okay, so actually, let's start, I'm going to ask everybody to stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so as each of you know, you were given in an assigned slot, so unfortunately Jackie or Michelle, some of our staff are going to have to go out and just make sure that the next slot of people that are supposed to come at 7:30 are all in an orderly fashion out there, so that when you're done, we're going to ask each of you, yeah, they're going to go out this door here, okay, so when your application is finished, we're going to actually have you step out, this, go out this way, so that you can go out and leave the building by the side door, okay, so you don't have to go back into the lobby, or they can go in the lobby.
They can.
Doesn't matter, or the side door brings you right to the parking lot, if you're parked on this side of the building, okay, so this way, we don't have any crossing, and please just bear with us, this is our first meeting in person since February, and we have a new clerk, we have a new secretary, so, you know, we're all going to, we all have to get used to how we're running things, so, first thing, first thing on our agenda is we do have five decisions this evening, so those are applications that this board has already reviewed, two of those that a board needs to have some discussion on for us to be able to issue our decision, or to fill in the blanks on our decision on a couple matters. After the decisions, we will have a number of public hearings, or adjourned public hearings, those are applications that the board's already had an opportunity to review, and now we want to hear from the neighbors, so again, for the folks that are here in the room right now, I believe you're all going to be decisions, and there's one public hearing amongst you. So, I guess just for the matter, for the public who are watching at home, we do have a couple, and for the board members, we do have a couple changes, number seven was not noticed properly, the applicant put up his sign, but no other noticing was done, so we will open it because his sign is up, but we're going to have to adjourn number seven. Number, and numbers thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen have all been withdrawn, so we need to just do refunds on those three applications, okay, so, so with that being said, just a heads up, our next two meetings will be Tuesday, August 25th, and Tuesday, September 22nd, although, again, we need to have a discussion about a potential conflict that evening, but we can do it at the end of this meeting, okay, and then we do have one set of minutes to approve, and I do want to thank Julie for her first time doing our minutes, she did a great job, so, there were just a couple amendments to it, that I did, just, I made corrections and just sent to the board members, so you'd have an opportunity to review, but if any other members have amendments to the agendas, you're welcome to offer them now.
I just emailed my corrections to everybody earlier today.
Oh, okay.
So, it's in the email, in the email in basket, so those changes will have to be made.
Okay, so do you want to make it?
So, I make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, let's start, we have a decision for number, item number one is Appeal 3940 Tuza, Freddie H. Tuza, for Helen Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 35-foot front line and 77-foot front line variance for a 10-foot by 14-foot shed under construction for which no building permit was issued, a two-foot height variance for 230 linear feet of proposed fencing to be located in front of the dwelling on Route 82, a 42-foot front line variance for the Helen Road side of the house, and a 77-foot front line variance for the Route 82 side of the house, which was built in 1951, pursuant to Sections 194-107B3, 194-98, 194-121, and 194-A2 of the zoning ordinance, the property is frontage on both Helen Road and Route 82, so in this case, we have a resolution, I think it was pretty clear at our last meeting, so if somebody wishes to offer that.
I'll offer. Appeal number 3940, applicant is Freddie H. Tuza, area variances for a 35-foot front line, 77-foot front line variances from the requirements of 194, 107B of the zoning ordinance, for a 10-by-14 shed under construction. Two, a two-foot height variance from the requirements of 194, 98 of the zoning ordinance for fencing surrounding the driveway, per the survey completed by James Sheridan LS on April 23rd, 2020. Three, a 42-foot front line variance from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance for the Helen Road side of the house, and four, a 77-foot front line variance from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance for the Route 82 side of the house, which was built in 1951, the variances. The location is for Healan Road in Hopewell Junction, zoning is B1, and the tax map number is 635704743294, resolution being offered by zoning board member Rocco Limetone, whereas the applicant owns property with frontage on both Healan Road and Route 82, and whereas both the shape of the property and it having frontage on both of these roads severely limits what the applicant can do with his property without seeking relief from the ZBA, and whereas the applicant previously requested 230 feet of six-foot fencing to shield the property from Route 82, but part of this fence would have been located in the right of way and not on the applicant's property, and whereas after further review, the applicant rescinded his request for the 230 feet of six-foot fencing along Route 82, and whereas the applicant currently has fencing shielding the gravel driveway as depicted on the survey, which is separate from the formerly proposed 230 feet of six feet fencing along Route 82, and whereas the residence is located in a B1 zone, but was built in 1951 and is allowed to remain as a residence due to its pre-existing non-conforming nature, and whereas this action is a type A action under SEQA, and no further action is required, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on June 23rd, 2020, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on June 10th, 2020, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, or be a detriment to the community, as use of the property will remain residential in nature, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the configuration of the property and its frontage on two roads. The variants requested are not substantial, given the shape of the lot, the proposed area variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions evidenced by the fact that it is a type 2 action. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the following variances, 35-feet front line and 77-feet front line variances from the requirements of 194-107B3 of the zoning ordinance for a 10-by-14 shed currently under construction, subject to the applicant obtaining all required permits. Two, a two-foot height variance from the requirements of 194-98 of the zoning ordinance for the fence surrounding the driveway, so long as a vinyl fence, which is currently in place, pursuant to the survey completed by James Sheridan LX on April 23rd, 2020, is not expanded in area. Three, a 42-foot front line variance from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance for the Healan Road side of the house, and four, a 77-foot front line variance from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance for the Route 82 side of the house, which was built in 1951. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution and order to be filed with the town clerk, and a copy sent to the application owner, second by?
Okay, I just want to correct one thing, it's a type 2 action under SEQA, not a type A action, okay, so I just, with that correction?
As amended, seconded as amended.
Good, thank you, so votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye, so Mr. Tuza, your motion carries, oh, okay, good, thank you, so you're going to go out, again, the door back here, okay, so you're all set, you just have to deal with the building department now, okay? Yeah, okay, have a good night.
Bye-bye now.
Okay, item number two, Appeal 3945, Wireless Edge 2 LLC and Orange County Poughkeepsie Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless. Wireless Edge Towers 2 LLC and Orange County Poughkeepsie Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless Edge is requesting a special permit to install a 110-foot monopole and associated ground-mounted equipment located within a 45-by-65-foot fenced gravel-surfaced compound to be located on a 69-acre parcel at the intersection of Carpenter Road and the southwest corner of the Taconic State Parkway pursuant to Section 194-76 of the zoning ordinance. So again, we do have a resolution, but this is one of those that we need a couple, need to discuss a couple items in there, we've already had the public hearing on several occasions, we closed the public hearing at our last meeting, the one thing I do need to ask the applicant is just whether they've heard anything from DEC, because we closed the public hearing, subject to hearing anything from DEC.
Sure, good evening, Robert Gordioso with the law firm of Snyder &amp; Snyder on behalf of the applicants, I'm joined by the president of Wireless Edge, Mr. John Arthur, we did submit previously a letter from Tectonic that laid out all of the wetland issues.
Okay, that's not what I'm asking.
Yes, and in that letter, they indicated they did meet with the DEC, that they did revise the plans based on the DEC request to revise a couple of the flags that were shown on the survey, we've submitted that plan to the DEC for them to sign the block that's required for them to sign, and then we'll be able to file the application, but beyond that, we don't expect any problems obtaining the necessary DEP permit.
DEC?
DEC, I'm sorry, DEC.
Okay, so, so is, has, or is DEC coming to do a site visit of the property?
They did, they came out and met with Tectonic, and that was in that letter that they, that they met, that they asked them to change a couple of the locations of the flags, which they did, which we resurveyed, submitted it to this board, and also submitted it to DEP, we're waiting for them to sign off on that revised survey of the wetland flags, and then we can file the application with them.
So does that change your, aside from the wetland flagging, does it change what you have proposed to us in terms of where the access road is, where the tower will be, where the fencing will be, anything?
No, not at all, if you recall, we're proposing to use the existing logging road, and we're proposing to make some minor changes to it.
The existing logging road that filled in wetlands, yes, that's why we wanted to get DEC out there.
Yeah, they did go out there, whatever, whatever we have to do with DEC, we're prepared to do, we can't file that application until they sign off on the certification block, which we've already submitted to them.
Okay, so I appreciate that you will do whatever DEC requires, we need to know what is DEC requiring, again, somebody filled in wetlands to create an access road, and so we need to see whether DEC is agreeing with the fact that, that all this, you know, material was brought in to create an access road, if not, we need to understand where your access is going to be, that's part of the discussion this board needs to understand.
So, I don't think that's a fair characterization, my understanding is that the logging road was there, and that apparently someone put, and it was not the applicant's, obviously, but someone put some wood chips along the access drive, so if DEC has a problem with that, whatever we have to do to satisfy DEC, we'll do to satisfy DEC, that will be part of the permitting process with the DEC, that's not in any way going to change where the proposed access is to the facility, because we wouldn't, if you, if you look at the wetland maps that we've submitted, the quote-unquote "logging road" is right through the middle of the two different wetland areas, so it's in, even if the logging road wasn't there, that's where we would have put the access drive anyway, but the fact is that it is there, the fact is we are going to utilize that, the fact is we will get any necessary permits from the DC, and if they have a problem with what was ever done in the past, we'll have to deal with that, and we understand that, we don't think, based on the site visit, that it's a major concern, because otherwise, we wouldn't be able to use the property if it were, but we're willing to proceed based on whatever is necessary with the DEC on that point.
Okay, Michael, any, did we know if Michelle ever had a chance to have any conversation with DEC, or no?
I don't know for sure, but I know, as, in the draft decision order, there is a condition about the applicant obtaining any necessary DEC permits and approvals, so I think that would cover the town.
And we do have to, and that's correct, because we do have to submit the DEC permit to the town wetlands inspector as part of your local code as well.
Okay, so for the board members, we do have a resolution before us, based on the discussion that we undertook at the last two public hearings, we do need to fill in exactly what we want this monopole to look like, the applicant has proposed a single brown monopole, we have had discussion about the fact that, because it's along the Taconic Parkway, which is a national scenic byway, and on the National Historic Register of, or the National Register of Historic Places, whether it should look like a tree or not, we already have one tree on the Dogwood Knolls Golf Course, it's, it comes a little bit above the tree line, but because it is a tree, it looks perfectly fine, so, I mean, we're not talking, somebody talked about that this would be the one along the hutch, we're not talking about a standalone single tree that's not, you know, going to be catching a lot of attention because it is by itself.
So, one of the things that we'd like to reiterate is that you mentioned the Taconic and the fact that it's a, it's a registered historic place, we did make the necessary filings with the New York State Historic Preservation Office, and we did submit a copy of their concurrence, that there will be no impact on the Taconic from the facility.
Gordioso, I'm going to cut you off, this is not a public hearing?
Sure.
You've already got that on the record with our public hearing, so yes, we do understand that, the State Historic Preservation Office has already signed off on your putting, citing a cell tower in this location, it doesn't alter the fact that the town can tell you, you know, your applicant here what it's going to look like, so.
I understand, I'm just reiterating the point that, that
Understood.
They found that there's no impact on
But we're not in a public hearing, so that, your comment is already on the record, so I just, I have a lot of business we've got to get through this evening, so I need to get board members to start their discussion in terms of what they would like it to look like. So, there is a section on page two, the monopole shall be designed to look, dot, 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 so.
My personal view of it is that if, based on the, last letter, I sort of agree, if it's painted brown, so those times when the trees are leafless
Right.
They're surrounded, it should blend in pretty well, I'm not sure that putting in a, a single evergreen tree in the midst of that would necessarily be an improvement, so I'm not looking to have a pine tree-type monopole, or anything, whatever you want to call it, I think we could put in there that it shall be painted brown and properly maintained to blend in, or whatever language we want to use with the trees located in the area. On that same thought, though, I would jump down to three, and I don't know if it's necessary, that to make sure the restrictive covenants are proper, I would like to add that that covenant has to be provided, or prior to commencement of any improvements on the property, and I would just put that suggestion in there, to make sure that it's always surrounded, and we know it's going to be surrounded by a proper restrictive covenant.
So how about prior to the issuance of a building permit?
Be that, and maybe put in there that proof of such filing must be provided to the building department prior to the issuance of a permit.
But the DRC itself should actually be subject to the approval of the town attorney.
Yeah, sure, that's fine.
So with, by putting the 200-foot buffer around the compound that the applicant's, the owner of the property, sorry, not the applicant, the owner of the property has offered, that gives us the?
I think that gives us a preservation.
Are we in agreement?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, so whoever's going to read this, when you get to that paragraph, I'll just fill it in, I'll read that part for you.
Do you want to go?
Oh, unless you
Well, she changed my language, so maybe I could just take that one from you there, so, do we agree on the?
The color brown, yes.
Design?
Agreed.
The monopole shall be?
So instead of will look like, you can just say will be painted brown?
Will be painted.
And kept maintained?
And maintained as such, maintained though.
Not, unless any other board members do.
No, no, I'm in agreement.
Then I would offer, for the board's consideration, a decision on Appeal number 3945, for the applicant Wireless Edge Towers 2 LLC and Orange County Poughkeepsie Limited Partnership to DBA Verizon Wireless, plans owned or firmly owned by Robert Ferguson, name of project, application for a special permit to construct a wireless telecommunications facility consisting of a 110-foot monopole and associated ground-mounted equipment located within a 45-by-65-fenced gravel-surfaced compound to be located on a 69-acre parcel at the intersection of Carpenter Road and the southwest corner of the Taconic State Parkway pursuant to Sections 194-76 through 194-84 of the zoning ordinance, located again at Carpenter Road, with resolution, resolution being offered by zoning board member James Meyer, and whereas Wireless Edge Towers 2 LLC and Orange County Poughkeepsie Limited Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless, the applicant applied for a special permit to construct a wireless telecommunications facility consisting of a 110-foot monopole and associated ground-mounted equipment located within a 45-foot by 65-foot fenced gravel-surfaced compound to be located on a 69-acre parcel at the intersection of Carpenter Road and the southwest corner of the Taconic State Parkway, bearing tax map SBL 6557-01-071531, the property pursuant to Sections 194-76 through 194-84 of the zoning ordinance, whereas the applicant has stated that there is no additional proposed use for the property besides the installation of the monopole, I should probably add and associated ground-mounted equipment located thereat, and whereas John Arthur on behalf of the applicant stated at the February 25th, 2020 meeting, that Verizon's usage of the monopole shall be with 106 feet despite the monopole being 110 feet, which allow for a necessary technology for municipal emergency services to be located at the top of the monopole, and whereas Robert Ferguson owns the property and has offered the town to place a declaration of restrictive covenants preventing future development or tree clearing within a 200-foot area around the fence 45-foot by 65-foot gravel compound with a proposed cell tower to maintain the existing trees, whereas this action is an on-listed action under SEQA, and the ZBA declared itself to be the lead agency at its February 25th, 2020 meeting, whereas the ZBA did not require balloon tests, since the applicant provided view shed maps, and did not request a height variance, and the area is heavily wooded, wooded, and whereas the ZBA authorized a public hearing at its February 25th, 2020 meeting, but the ZBA's March and April meetings were canceled due to coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic, whereas the zoning board of appeals held public hearings on May 26th, 2020, and June 23rd, 2020, June 23rd meeting, and whereas the town invited its wireless consultant from the Center for Municipal Solutions to take me a ferry to the June 23rd meeting, and whereas the applicant showed drone video of the property at the June 23rd meeting, and whereas the public hearing was closed on June 23rd, 2020, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on March 11th, 2020, now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the applicant's request to construct a wireless telecommunications facility consisting of a 110-foot monopole and associated ground-mounted equipment located within a 45-foot by 65-foot fenced gravel-surfaced compound, subject to the following conditions, one, the applicant obtains all necessary permits and approvals from the Department of Environmental Conservation, DEC, for a previously filled wetland area prior to erecting the monopole, and share those approvals with the ZBA, if the applicant is unsuccessful in obtaining its required permits and approval, then access to the site and location of the proposed tower must undergo a subsequent review by the ZBA, the monopole shall be painted brown and be maintained as such to blend with the surrounding trees, three, the property shall, the property owner shall file a declaration of restricted covenants, subject to the approval of the town attorney, with the county clerk's office restricting any development within 200 feet in every direction of the 45-foot by 65-foot fenced gravel-surfaced compound prior to the issuance of a building permit by the town, four, the top four feet of the 110-foot monopole are reserved exclusively for municipal emergency services, and the applicants are reserved additional space for emergency services if necessary, after consultation with the Dutchess County Emergency Services or the police and fire departments serving residents in the town of East Fishville, such service shall be provided at no cost to either town or county for emergency services. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the decision ordered to be filed with the town clerk, and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Jim, can you, I don't have a resolution, so I
Well, I was just going to add that one.
That's fine, go ahead, so is there a second to the resolution?
A second as amended, but town or county?
Where?
Yeah, I changed that, I said or.
He said it out loud, so.
I said it out loud.
The record will reflect it because he said it.
And I marked this one, which is the one I'll hand in to be part of the record.
Okay, so votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Mayor, ah, sorry, Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye, so the motion carries, you guys are set to deal with the building department.
Thank you very much for your time, thank you.
Thank you, Rocco.
Okay.
Yep, nope, you're going, oh, you've got to get your stuff, okay, I was going to say you're going to go that way. Okay, so item number three is Appeal 3947 Duffy, Lauren Duffy, 25 Piken Hole Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a 357-square-foot variance in order to build a 1,230-square-foot detached garage pursuant to Section 194-107C of the zoning ordinance, the square footage of the footprint of the existing dwelling is 1,456 square feet, thank you. So again, we've already had the public hearing for this one, we've closed it, so we do have a resolution that should be ready to go here.
Okay, this is Appeal number 3947, applicant is Lauren Duffy, requesting an area variance for the requirement under Section 194-107C to allow a 1,230-square-foot detached garage, which is 480 square foot larger than what is allowed by the zoning ordinance, the location of the property is at 25 Piken Hole Road, Hopewell Junction, a resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Anson, whereas the applicant owns 25 Vehicle Road, Hopewell Junction, the property, and whereas the residence on the property does not contain a basement, no saw mechanical equipment needed for the house is located in the attached garage, thereby reducing its usable space, and whereas the application is, whereas the application is to construct a 30-foot by 41-foot, 1,230-square-foot detached garage, which is more than 750-square-foot allowed by Section 194-107C of the zoning ordinance, for the storage of three non-commercial vehicles and seasonal household items, and whereas pursuant to a memorandum dated March 4th, 2020, from And whereas pursuant to a memorandum dated March 4, 2020 from Rick Witt, who is the town's floodplain administrator, a floodplain development permit is not required for the location of the detached garage as shown on the plan dated March 2, 2020. And whereas this is a, this action is a type-two action under CEQA, and so no further action is required. And whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on June 23, 2020. And whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on June 10, 2020. And whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community as the use of the property will remain residential in nature and a nearby property also contains an attached garage. The desired result could be achieved by some other, could be achieved by some other means such as offsite storage. However, storage space in the residence itself is limited due to the residence not having a basement. While numerically substantial, the size of the variance requested is not as significant after a more in-depth review considering the property lacks storage space due to it not having a basement. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions evidenced by the fact that this is a type-two action and no floodplain development permit is required. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the applicant's request for an area variance from the requirement of section 194-107C to allow a 1,230-square-foot detached garage, which is 480 square foot larger than what is allowed by the zoning ordinance, subject to the condition that the detached garage is not used for any commercial purpose. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the decision and order to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows. Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries now. Ms. Duffy, you just deal with the building department. Okay, oh, Mr. Okay. You can head out that door there. Okay. Item number four, Appeal 3948 De Silva Linz. De Silva, 116 Old State Road, Hopewell Junction is requesting a variance to allow a six-foot fence to remain in front of the front line of his house pursuant to section 194-98B of the zoning ordinance. The existing dwelling is located in a B1 zone. So again, we've held a public hearing. I believe this one is pretty clear because we've talked about landscaping, so there are conditions that are included within the resolution. If somebody wants to offer the resolution.
Sure. Appeal number 3948. Linz De Silva is the applicant. Name of the project is six-foot fence to remain in front of the front line of his house pursuant to section 194-98B of the zoning ordinance. The existing dwelling is located in a B1 zone and the location is at 116 Old State Road in Hopewell Junction. Resolution being offered by zoning board member Rocco Limaton. Whereas the applicant has requested a variance to allow a six-foot fence to remain in front of the front line of the house pursuant to section 194-98B of the zoning ordinance. The existing dwelling is located in a B1 zone. Whereas this action is a type-two action under CEQA and no further action is required. And whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on March 11, 2020. And whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on May 26 of 2020 and June 23 of 2020. And whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community as the fence has been there for many years and will be improved with some plantings to break up the length and breadth of the expanse. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the applicant's lot fronts on two streets, so his rear yard is also a front yard. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions as the fence has been there for many years. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by Linz De Silva for a variance to allow a six-foot fence to remain in the front of the front line of his house pursuant to section 194-98B of the zoning ordinance, subject to the following conditions. The applicant must either, one, obtain all required permits for the pool which was installed or, two, remove the pool. The area that the fence occupies as of the date of this decision in order may not be increased. And last, the landscaping that was installed in front of the fence must remain in place and be replaced in the future if necessary. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Votes as follows. Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So Mr. De Silva, your resolution is good? Okay, so item number four.
Five.
Five, sorry. Thank you. Appeal 3952 Hannah Michael and Tiffany Hannah, 43, McEwen Terrace, Hopewell Junction are requesting a two-foot height variance for a 32-foot linear, for 32 linear feet of six-foot fence to be located in the front of the front line of their house as well as a variance to allow the good side of the fence to face them pursuant to section 194-98B of the zoning ordinance. So this is another one. We've held the public hearing and there was some extended discussion about this. We actually have two resolutions in your packet for this one. One goes one direction and the other goes the other direction. So I, if the board wants to have any discussion or somebody is just welcome to offer a resolution. Just read both of them carefully.
The two neighbors are agreeing to which side the fence should be, if I remember correctly. And I did look at the property on Google Maps and Google View. And yes, normally we, you know, if it was a sole applicant with the neighbor having, either being neutral or having an opinion adverse to the applicant, then I could say that, you know, you have to have the good side facing the neighbor. But here, the neighbor, the neighbor already has the good side facing the applicant and so it's partial fence. And so if the applicant puts the good side on the other side, it will look disjointed. And so even the applicant and the neighbor both agreed to it and the neighbor even came and pleaded with this, with this appeal board, with the zoning board of appeals, that she wanted it how the applicant wanted it. So, you know, if the two neighbors want to live as good neighbors, where are we, you know, why are we trying to not allow them to have what the neighbors are asking, I mean, what the neighbors are asking each other for? So I don't know. That's.
I think we have to be careful about setting a precedent about putting a good side of the fence, not where it belongs. They can have a two-sided fence. There's nothing that says you can't do a two-sided offense with two good sides if that's what we want. The real issue is whether the fence was necessary. Because we were given multiple stories about why the fence was.
And that's just, I want to make sure I have the right one. This is the one where they kept saying for the pool, but towards the end of the meeting they said it was privacy from each other.
Right.
And that one is more reasonable in my view. I, you know, they sort of showed at the end that they were really on top of each other when they came out of their house on that side of their houses. So I may be more inclined on that reasoning. In fact, I said during the meeting, well, now you presented a whole nother issue that you didn't bring beforehand. We had gone through a review and, you know, 85% of the time discussing privacy from a pool, which didn't make sense to me. It still doesn't make sense to me. So if we're gonna provide the variance, you know, for us, the last reason, I'm more inclined to go along with that. I do have a problem though in terms of saying agreement that we now have a, I understand the argument that it'd be more disjointed, but I think if they're gonna put up a fence that it should be compliant with the law and have the good side facing out or get a double-sided one. So as the chair perhaps suggested, I would go along with that one, make it a double-sided one and neither one has to worry about which side is the good or bad side.
I'm, if that's where we're gonna go, I agree because this is a freestanding fence. It's not connected to the other fence. And this is in front of the front of the house.
Correct.
So if anything, both sides should be finished.
The only argument I would really consider is the fact that they need privacy from each other coming out of the house and they're on top of each other.
Although we did discuss that landscaping probably could give them the privacy that they seek. So they actually do have another option. That's just the, so.
I mean, for me, after driving by and looking at the property, I see what they were talking about, how you can see certain things from the road. The fact that the trees are deteriorating, I see why they want the fence. And I agree with Aziz in terms of the neighbors are in agreement about having the finished side and the good side. They're in agreement as to that, so I don't see an issue with that either. I understand what Jim is saying about maybe having it on both sides, but you have a fence there now that's the same way, so you have continuity if you keep that the same way with one good side and one bad side.
Except if one neighbor takes it down at some point and then.
They decide they don't need it anymore because the other side is up front, we take it down. So again, they can resolve that issue themselves very easily. You can put up a fence with good side and both side. You don't have to have a good and bad side.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think now that, you know, we're having a discussion, a conversation on this issue, they have the option of having two good sides, so that solves their problem. And again, neighbors change in five, 10 years. How they want to replace it, how do they replace it? So, you know, addressing those issues that we might, that might happen, maybe we should stick to, you know, the town law.
Well, I think we should rephrase good side and bad side to finish and unfinished.
Right, that's fine.
Because I think good side and bad side is subjective. Apparently, the applicants don't feel there's a good side or bad side. They just feel there's a finished and unfinished side, which they don't have an issue with.
Well, in a vinyl fence, all sides are finished. They're vinyl fences. And the difference is that good side, bad side, on some vinyl fences, you have the supporting structure and the slats of the vinyl are attached to that. Whereas in the good side, double-sided good side is you have your post and it slots down in between it. So there's no supporting structure on the other side and therefore both sides look exactly the same. So when I say two good sides, I'm talking about that kind of fence where there's no supporting structure running the length of the panels on one side of the fence.
So both sides are finished?
Well, no, they're not both finished. They're all, on a vinyl fence, everything's finished. What do you mean by finished? I mean, finished means painted?
I mean, finished, I understand what you're saying and I think you understand what I'm saying. I'm just saying we should steer away from saying good side and bad side. I think it should be finished, unfinished. It's two different looks. I don't think one is good and one is bad. I don't think we're here to make that determination, which is good or which is bad.
Again, when you're.
Well, they certainly understood it during the meeting because they were arguing that it'd be the same as before.
And it's what they requested on their application.
Yeah, so they understand what being requested and what my position, what the chair's position is being propounded here. So I mean, I guess to make it clear, if it's gonna be approved going forward, I'm gonna not approve, my vote wouldn't be to approve the unfinished side to the outside of the applicant's property.
And for the record, section 194-98 of the code defines it as the finished side versus unfinished side rather than good side and bad side.
That's fine. Jim, with some amendments, if you, if that's the resolution that you want to offer?
In reference to appeal number 3952 by the applicant Michael and Tiffany Hannah. Name of project, a two-foot height variance for 32 linear feet of six-foot fence to be located in front of the front line of their house as well as variance to allow the good side of the fence to face them pursuant to section 194-98B of the zoning ordinance. The variance is, location of 43 McCount Terrace, Hopewell Junction. Resolution offered by zoning board member James Meyer. Whereas the applicant is requesting a two-foot height variance for a 32 linear feet of six-foot fence to be located in front of the front line of their house as well as a variance to allow the good side of the fence to face them pursuant to section 194-98B of the zoning ordinance. Whereas this action is a type-two action under CEQA and no further action is required. Whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on June 10, 2020. Whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on July 28, 2020. Whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the height variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as proposed fence is similar to existing fencing on the neighboring property which is already in place. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the property. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by Michael Hannah for a variance to allow a two-foot height variance for 32 linear feet of six-foot fence to be located in the front of the front line of their house, but not the variance to allow the finished or good side of the fence to face them pursuant to section 194-98B of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
What I'd like to do is to say that instead of saying not allow, say deny, just to make sure that, just to make sure that the good side is going to face the neighbor. Instead of saying not, you know, instead of saying not, just say that we deny the request for the good side to face them.
Well, we gotta be careful about that because if they do a two-sided fence, then the finished side is in fact facing the neighbor, so.
Okay, so, fine.
So we're just not gonna give them the variance for the, to allow them to just limit it to the one side, the good side facing them.
Correct. So, second is amended.
Do I, I don't understand. Say that again? So you're saying not allowed to have an unfinished side facing them?
Correct.
Yes, because if they want, they can do a two-sided fence. And if we're denying them, we're not giving them that option of having a two-sided fence. So.
Okay, so, second is amended.
So votes as follows. Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye, I guess. All right. So anybody who was here for the first five applications, you're now finished and you do not need to be in the room anymore so that we can make a little bit more room for a couple more folks. So anybody before Gabrielli. Next on the agenda is item number six, Appeal 3938. Gabrielli, Donald Gabrielli of Carmo is requesting a var. Gabrielli, Donald Gabrielli of Carmel is requesting a variance to build on two undersized vacant lots, which would be combined for a total of 1.69 acres in an R3 zone on a non-town road, Arthur Road, pursuant to Sections 194-130 of the zoning ordinance, and a 280A variance. Do I have a motion to reconvene the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening.
I just compliment you on your color coordination there with your mask and shirt.
I did it on purpose. Got to be presentable, right?
Absolutely.
So we were before the board last month. We didn't have our stormwater report yet, and a neighbor had actually had some comments regarding runoff and so forth, based upon maybe some previous work, and then none up on the hill behind him. So we did, we did prepare a report on our end. It was submitted. We've had some, actually, some dialogue. I don't know if the board saw that today with the neighbor. Okay, because we had...
I wasn't at my computer much today, so...
The only thing that you have is the phone stop.
Okay.
That's the...
I haven't seen that, no. But effectively, I don't think, what Mr. Montagia actually indicated was he's not very familiar, you know, it's the probably, I mean, there's different things within civil engineering. I don't think that's his thing, but, you know, again, he didn't find it irrational in terms of what was submitted, and the biggest concern he had was the issue of maintenance. When we deal with these type systems, these onsite water retention facilities with subdivisions typically in town, you know, it's a bunch of lots, there's a drainage district set up, there's certain rules in terms of making sure maintenance is adhered to. I think that's, that's pretty common. An individual lot, it's, you know, this is a kind of an emerging technology, so I guess at some point, we're going to have to figure out how to deal with the maintenance issue, whether it's written into the deed, there's yearly maintenance, something along those lines. I will tell you, you know, the idea is to put in what they call cultech units, which are underground drainage...
Storage, right.
Discharges to ground. Before they get there, they go into a catch basin, there's a large sump, so there is infiltration there prior to, you know, introducing it to that, but there has to be some kind of level or component of maintenance to these things. It's just the way it is.
Right.
So if the board wants to felt so inclined, we could certainly move along the line of including that as part of the resolution, but I'd like to see maybe what Scott has to say first.
So the town engineer did send me an email this afternoon that says, "The parcel falls within the New York City DEP watershed and has special requirements for development. The New York City DEP must review and approve the septic system in conjunction with the Duchess County Health Department. The New York State DEC requires that disturbances over 5,000 square feet of, submit a stormwater pollution plan or a SWIP. Stormwater runoff from the site is not, which is reviewed and approved by the DEC." So the SWIP shows that the stormwater runoff from the site is not increased as a result of the development. However, it's not a requirement of the SWIP to mitigate any pre-existing drainage problem. The engineer has prepared the required SWIP plan and report. And then three, the town could require mitigation of pre-existing drainage, of a pre-existing drainage problem, as a condition of any sought-after approval if subtop problems were known. The plans submitted do not indicate any such problems, but the, but the public hearing has certainly indicated that that's an issue. So that previous development in this area did likely cause some stormwater runoff issues on these sites. Not, we're going by what the neighbors tell us.
Okay.
Because they know the area better than we do.
Wouldn't surprise me, so. Yeah, that wouldn't surprise me. He's at, you know, at the bottom of a hill, and over time, there's been lots that have been developed randomly over time, and that increases runoff. So I think he had a valid concern, but again, at least with regards to this property, and maybe those going, going forward, with the rules that are promulgated now and so forth, will be some mitigation relative to making sure it doesn't get any worse.
So, I didn't see, what, Mr., I don't have any letter from Mr. Montagna, so does he have any...
I can, we were just, some emails going back and forth, and I think at the end of the day...
I have an email.
Huh?
I have two.
Oh, if you have a paper copy, that's great. This is Joe Farazza from Westchester Modular Homes.
Oh, okay. So this is dated today at 2:43. Mr. Gillespie, thank you for sending me a copy of the site plan. I can't say I'm very familiar with the cultech recharger system. It seems like viable solution to controlling stormwater flow. I do have two questions. Does the system require any maintenance or cleaning? Yes. Does the stormwater calc, or calculations, I guess, assume this will be no, there will be no site disturbance past the silt fence line?
That's correct.
Okay.
The map is noted that way, too.
Other than that, it appears post-construction flow is equal to or less than pre-construction flow, is this was my main concern with this construction. Okay, so that was what we asked, was make sure you had a conversation with the neighbor last time around. Can I put this in the file?
Oh, yes.
I have a pile for you. Okay, so, the one thing we did not get on the record is the fact that this is an R3 zone, but when I look at the map of all the other parcels in that area, I honestly don't see a single parcel that's three acres. So, you know, I just wanted to get it on the record, because it is a public hearing, the fact that we did consider it is an undersized lot in a three-acre zone, but I'm not seeing that any of the other builds, built lots in that area are anywhere near three acres. So I think the biggest one I see is 2.45 acres, but most of them are 1.3, 1.2, 1.02, 1.1, so I don't, you know, because it's important for us to consider the character of the neighborhood, that's why it's important for us to know that.
Understood.
So any other comments or questions from board members?
No, I'm good.
I'm good.
None by me.
So is there anyone here to speak for or against the request from Donald Gabrielli of Carmel, requesting a variance to build on two undersized vacant lots, which would be combined for a total of 1.69 acres in an R3 zone on a non-town road? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Now, under the news thing, do we have a delay in the public hearing, or this is...
This has already been open for public hearing, so...
Okay, so...
So we're going to close and reserve, though?
Close and reserve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so, Michael, next month we'll have the decision on this, okay?
Okay. Thank you very much, folks.
Okay.
Good night.
You're welcome. Okay, so we need to bring the next round of...
The next one was number seven, it was gone?
Well, we have to open it, because he has a sign up, but he didn't do other things he was supposed to promote.
Okay. I knew you said something, I couldn't remember where it was, sorry.
Yeah.
All right, so come on in and join us. So we're now in the public hearing phase of our meeting, so all, probably each of you are here for some public hearing, whether you're the applicant itself or a neighbor, which is fine. Just a couple comments. Item number seven was not properly noticed, so Gogritiani, so we will open the public hearing. If you are a neighbor, we will listen to your comment, but we are not going to close that public hearing or make any, take any action on that application this evening. So this board has already had an opportunity to review all the applications that are here for public hearing, but now we want to hear from the neighbor. So if anybody is a neighbor of any of these sites, you are absolutely welcome to speak at the appropriate time. So, item number seven, Appeal 3916, Gogritiani. Vladimir Gogritiani, 3569 Route 52, Stormville, is amending his request for a two-foot sideline and a 73-foot front line variance for a pre-existing detached garage built in 1944, a 38-foot front line variance for a pre-existing 644-square-foot dwelling, also built in 1944, and an expansion of a non-conforming structure in order to construct an 891-square-foot addition, which was amended from the original 247 square feet to the dwelling pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations and Section 194-123 of the zoning ordinance. So the noticing on this one was not complete, but the applicant did have a sign at his property, so we do want to respect that if any of his neighbors saw that sign and came this evening. So I would like a motion to open this public hearing, but recognizing we're not going to take any action, and we do have to do proper noticing of all the neighbors.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so this is opened. So I don't see Mr. Gogritiani here.
As we said previously, this is a one-bedroom house that he is looking to more than double in size, which is not allowed by the code. You're not allowed to increase any structure by more than 50%, so that's one of the reasons he's here. He was proposing to add a family room, but he's already indicated to us that it's a family of five, living in a one-bedroom house, and he's going to double the size, so of course, we have concerns about really what the use of that square footage would be. And again, not just for him, because if it's, if he uses it in the right fashion, that's fine, but the next applicant may decide to take that large family room he wanted to put in and convert it into a bedroom. So that's what we have to be careful about. He's already had, consulted with an engineer who just said it was not possible, because of the flooding in that area, it was not possible for him to actually increase his septic capacity and enable him to have more bedrooms in that house. So, you know, so that's, I just need to get that on the record, because that was part of our previous review. Are there any comments or questions from board members?
I have none.
Okay, so is there anyone here who wishes to speak for the request from Vladimir Gogritiani, 3569 Route 52, Stormville, amending his request for a two-foot sideline and a 73-foot front line variance for a pre-existing detached garage, and a whole host of other variances? Again, knowing that this is not when we'll close the public hearing. So seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing until the next meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good, no problem. Item number eight, Appeal 3949, Mastrinardi. Casey Mastrinardi is requesting a variance to build on an undersized lot, .379 acres in an R1 zone, a 25-foot variance to the required lot depth. The lot is 125 feet deep, and code requires 150 feet, and a 20-foot front line, 21-foot front line variance pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations and Section 194-131 of the zoning ordinance. The lot is located at 4 First Street, Hobell Junction, is in the ownership of Davis. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
So this is an application we've had the opportunity to review before. This is a block behind Frankie's, so it's, you know, right in that area of Church Street, right past there. That's an area that has smaller houses, because they do not need septic. They have public water and sewer. And so because of that, they don't need the larger-sized lots that many other people do in town. So, and we've already approved another variance for a house, I think for the lot right next door, to be over, you know, to, on a, on a smaller-sized lot with the same variances needed for the front line. So I think we were all supportive of this, and wanted to just make sure there were, if there were any neighbors' concerns. I do want to write, read into the record one letter that we did receive. I have a request from, sorry, a letter from Carol and Vince Maello at 6 Raplié Street, Hobell Junction. Dear sirs, we are writing in support of Casey Mastrinardi, who has appealed for a variance to build on First Street. This family has been an exemplary neighbor for many years. They are respectful and fastidious about maintaining their property, and have always used thoughtful, good judgment. They're an asset to this neighborhood. We hope you'll approve their appeal, Number 3949, on July 28, 2020. So, no other questions from board members? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Casey Mastrinardi, requesting a variance to build on an undersized lot, and a 25-foot variance to the required lot depth, and a 21-foot front line variance for the lot located at 4 First Street, Hobell Junction? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? We do have a resolution.
So moved.
Good, thank you. All in favor?
Aye. This is Appeal Number 3949. Applicant is Casey Mastrinardi, on lands owned by Douglas Davis, requesting an area variance for the requirement of Schedule of Bulk Regulations and Section 194-131. The zoning ordinance is follows. One, a variance for an undersized lot, .379 acres in an R1 zone. Two, a 20-foot, 25-feet variance to the required lot depth. Lot is 125 feet deep, and code requires 150 feet. And three, a 21-foot front line variance, the variances. The property is located at 4 First Street, Hobell Junction. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Assan, whereas the property, that is the subject of the application for area variances. Variances is located at 4 First Street, Hobell Junction, and whereas the property is previously created, is a previously created residential building lot, and whereas the property will be served by municipal water and sewer, and whereas the variances in this area for undersized lots have previously been approved, and whereas this action is a type-two action under SECRE, and no further action is required, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on July 28, 2020, and whereas a legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on July 15, 2020, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, as the applicant is proposing to build a residence which is similar to other properties in the neighborhood, the desired results cannot be achieved by other, by any other means. The variance requested is, are not substantial when considering that the lot is previously created, that lot is previously created lot, and the house itself will be similar in size and scope to neighboring properties, and whereas the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions evidenced by the fact that it is a type-two action, and the property will be connected to municipal water and sewer. Now therefore be resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the applicant's request for the following area variances. One, a variance for an, a variance for an undersized lot, .379 acre in a R1 zone. Number two, a 20-foot, 25-feet variance to the required lot depth. Lot is 125 feet deep, and code requires 150 feet. And three, a 21-foot front line variance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the, of the decision in order to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries for Mastrinardi. Okay, you're all set. Sorry, I should have explained to you, you're going to leave by way of this door over here, so that you're not going back out into lobby. You can then either leave on the side door that takes you right to the parking lot, or you can go through, back through there, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number nine, Appeal 3956, Wieland, Wieland.
Daniel Wieland, 740 Route 82, Hobell Junction, is requesting a two-foot height variance for the replacement of an existing six-foot fence, which was located in the front yard pursuant to Section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance, and a variance for a future pool and spa, which would be located in the front yard. The parcel has two front yards and no rear yard. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so, I have one thing to note on this. When the board reviewed this last month, there was no request for a pool and spa.
So the applicant came in and amended the application, so I want the board to be aware of that, even though we reviewed this previously, where normally I would say we're ready for the neighbors. Suddenly, we have in our application a pool and spa that was not there before, so I think we, Mr. Wieland?
Yes.
Okay, you need to come on up to the microphone here and explain why we're here with this, so...
That was on the application when I sent it in last month, when we read it, it was on there.
Okay, but then I thought you took it off, and so all we talked about when we met was the fence.
No, we talked about the pool last month as well, and you had suggested a different movement, but then by the end of the call, we were all...
I do remember discussing something.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow, I'm lost, okay.
I do remember, because it's, so, there were different options brought up about the pool, or how it would look better.
Okay.
Actually, I'm looking at your application that was mailed on April 30, and it says, "I would like to replace this six-foot privacy fence that exists already on my property with a new one. The prior fence has existed over 20 years and has been there prior to my ownership." And that was the request of your appeal, so I don't know where the pool and spa showed up.
The amended copy was done, I believe... The, the amended copy was done, I believe, after the May meeting, but we did discuss it during the June one.
Okay, because I don't have it.
Uh, there was, we had an in-depth conversation about the pool during the, the May meeting, or, yeah, the, the June meeting, excuse me.
There was one received on June 11th that adds in on the line. I would also like to...
Okay.
...seek a variance for a, I'm doing it sideways.
So basically, it was a different appeal. I mean, it was a, even though it had the same appeal number, but it was...
P, applicants are, do come in and amend their applications, so...
Okay, because I never got this appeal, the amended portion. I only have the other one.
Okay, well, I didn't remember getting it, so we're all batting a thousand here. Okay. Um, so let's just be clear about where this pool is, because, oh, you're the Arrowhead.
Yes.
That's what it is. Okay, so you have, you have a lot that's got, in essence, two front yards. Your, both your rear of your lot is, I do remember this, because there used to be a pool there.
Correct, yes.
Is it the right thing to trigger?
But the issue on yours is that you have a fence that extends beyond your property.
And that, I already spoke to the fence company, that's going to be moved back to the, when they do the rest, hopefully, they will move it.
Okay, because we can't approve fencing that's showing up on...
Yep, I will, that is going to be moved. I already spoke to them about it.
Okay.
It's two feet on the one end, and I think like six feet on the other, so...
What?
That would be the issue with the fence.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, and because you have, already two on one side, and you've got Arrowhead Road on the other, you really have no backyard, um, and so that was why we were agreeing with the fact that the six-foot fence where, worked back there.
And you were worried about the pool being in, in essence, the front yard on the other, on the side, yeah, right.
Yeah, because we had a couple of them.
Yeah.
That all came up at the same time. So, okay, my apologies, because that was, I was confusing it with another thing, so, but, okay, so, any comments or questions from board members?
Um, I did a site visit, and so I know, when you mentioned Arrowhead, I was like, okay, I was there, I looked at the property, and yes, the, the location, I remember the discussion last month about the pool and, uh, and maybe it was there, but I, I had the old paperwork, so I was actually paying more attention to what the applicant was, uh, saying. But one thing is that, uh, I, I was there a few days back, and we'd asked you to fill the, the edge of the corner up there, because it's, uh, more than a six-foot fence up there, because, and again, because of the terrain, um, so are you going to address that particular issue?
Absol, when, when they, when they take out the fence and put a new one, I'm going to put the fill there to make sure it meets the ground in all areas.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, because we do, what we don't want to see is the post of a fence, and then you attach the fence higher up, and then in essence, the fence becomes higher then.
No, absolutely. I, I will have fill in there for the fence, like that set, that corner section that you're talking about.
Yeah, because, yeah, bulk of it is, you know, exactly six feet, uh, or whatever, you know, but there's a corner area where the terrain dips down, and you have a post that is completely naked that you, when anybody can see.
Yep, no, that, that will be filled.
And it's not your, something that you did. It's just that the, the terrain is such.
And if you're going to fix the terrain, you can't just raise it for, like this with the dirt. You gotta make it like ground level on both sides of the fence, or at least the outside of the fence.
Right, where, where it meets it on the corner, inside elbow and the outside elbow, it's going to be...
I mean, the whole thing should be just like, that, it should match with the rest of the terrain.
You want it to look like it belongs there.
Yeah.
No problem.
All right, and wasn't just pull in, put in for this specific purpose, so.
Correct.
All right, so any other questions or comments from board members?
I'm good.
Nope.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, much better. Um, so is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Daniel Wieland, 740 Route 82, Hopewell Junction, requesting a two-foot height variance for the replacement of an existing six-foot fence, which is located in the front yard, pursuant to Section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance, and a variance for a future pool and spa, which would be located in the front yard? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Hi, Jim?
So in reference to Appeal number 3956, applicant Daniel Wieland, area variance for, I, a two-foot height variance for the requirements of 194-198 of the zoning ordinance for the replacement of an existing fence located in the front yard. Double I, a variance from the requirements of 194-95C of the zoning ordinance to allow a swimming pool in the front yard, and triple I, a variance from the requirements of 194-94 and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance to allow a deck in a front yard to surround the pool. For end, the variance is closed for end. Location, 740 Route 82, Hopewell Junction. Resolution offered by zoning board member James Meyer. Whereas the applicant owns property with frontage on both Arrowhead Road and Route 82, whereas the property having frontage on both of these roads severely limits what the applicant do for his property, or on his property, without seeking relief from the ZBA, whereas part of this application consists of replacing existing dilapidated fence, which is believed to have been erected at the property decades ago by a prior owner, whereas this action is a type-two action under CEQA, and no further action is required. Whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on July 28, 2020, whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on July 15, 2020, and whereas the zoning, zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variances will not produce undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, as the use of the property will remain residential in nature, and the replacement of the existing dilapidated fence will be an improvement upon what currently exists. The desired result will not be achieved by some other means due to the configuration of the property and its frontage on two roads. The variance requested are not substantial, given its frontage on two roads. The proposed area variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions evidenced by the fact that this is a type-two action. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the following variances. One, a two-foot height variance from the requirements of 194-198 of the zoning ordinance for replacement of an existing fence located in the front yard, subject to, I, the applicant locating the new fence solely on his property and removing any fence that encroaches onto a right-of-way or onto the neighbor's property, and double I, the applicant planting landscaping were appropriate. Two, a variance from the requirements of 194-95C of the zoning ordinance to allow a swimming pool in the front yard, and, three, a variance from the requirements of 194-94 and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance to allow a deck in the front yard to surround the pool. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the decision in order to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant order. And then, just before I finish, just the last discussion we had, do we want to put a triple I on subdivision one, indicating that the ground around the fence shall be properly landscaped to, so that the slats of the fence are not above the, level the ground?
Yeah, okay.
Let me see, I want to word that.
That the, that the bottom of the fence is level with the ground. That's the bottom line. That's what we're looking for. We don't want it suspended on a post.
Yeah, that's easy to say, yeah.
Right.
What I suggest is, and triple I, that the bottom of the fencing shall be at the ground level along the length of the fence. As amended, I offer that resolution to the board.
Okay, so is there a...
Second is amended.
Good, thank you. Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye, so your motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
All right, have a good evening.
Thank you, have a good night.
Okay. Item number 10, Appeal 3957, Scalisi, Richard Scalisi, 47 Drive, Circle Drive, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a variance to build a six-foot fence on the rear property line pursuant to Section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance, and a 24-foot rear line variance for a 320-square-foot existing deck pursuant to Section 194-94 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a, the motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Scalisi. Okay, so come on up to the microphone, um, because when we last met with you in June, um, we then asked you to get a survey of your property, so we did agree we would allow you to go to public hearing, but we got to really take a chance to, to review the survey to make sure...
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, there should be a new survey in everybody's folder.
Yes. That's right, because the other one we couldn't see.
Yeah, just got to remember where I put it.
All right, so, the deck off the back is 28.1 feet in, so that's, we just need to make sure we're getting the right measurements here. 28 and 24 is 52, so that's fine. He actually doesn't need a 24-foot rear line variance. Probably only a 23, so it's not, it's, okay, um, there's a shed 8.1 feet off the back.
Yeah, we have a variance for that.
You, okay, good, thank you. That's, the front of the house is only 31 feet off the...
We have variance for all of that.
Okay, good.
We did an addition in, um...
2005.
2005.
Okay.
And you took care of all of that then.
Got it. Sorry, it's...
No, that's okay.
That last meeting, that last meeting went so long, it was...
(laughing).
All right, so anybody see anything to be concerned about on the survey? And just explain, for the record, why do you need a six-foot fence on the property line?
Uh, well, we wanted to put the fence where we took down a bunch of trees, just to keep the same look that we had. Um, and I'm actually going to be a foot, a foot, I'd like to go a foot, or maybe even two feet, off of the property line, but I can't guarantee it's going to be the two feet that you require.
Okay.
So, even if I could do a one foot, just so I have a little bit of wiggle room, just to keep it, uh, you know, plumb with the house, straight with the house, wherever the house is.
Because our, our biggest issue, one of the reasons we have the fences two feet in is because you got to be able to maintain the other side, and how can you do that unless you're going on somebody else's property, so...
Yeah, and now that I got the survey, I see that I can do that and keep the same line that I had with the trees, if I am, you know, it's about one foot is the closest I'm going to get to the property line.
Okay, so...
But the majority of the fence will be two feet off.
Okay, so the, we can reduce the, the request for the variance to one feet. One foot.
Do they put pins on both corners, or you can draw a line along? Good.
Yep.
A one-foot var, rear line variance. It's actually not, it's just a... Okay. So any comments or questions from board members?
Um, are there many trees that are going to prevent the fence from going through? Or, because if there are trees, I mean...
There is, and actually, it looks like, I may stop it at those trees also, I'm not sure. Uh, there is two pine trees. I'll either stop it at the trees, put something, some kind of screening in between the two trees, and then start it again, or, uh, maybe even just stop it there and do some screening. I'm not, I'm not sure.
Yeah, because the thing is, when you're, because I'm thinking, if you have a tree, and then you've got, you're looking for a one foot, you've got roots up there, and so you're going to be...
Impacting the tree.
Impacting the tree, so it, it's something, I don't know. So, um, I mean, you're looking for privacy and other issues, but, um, so, uh, you know, again, you know, you're, I don't know if we should be giving you two, you know, when you're already taking a six-foot fence, you should keep it two feet, two feet inside your property, so you can go around and fix it or, you know, maintain it. So, but if you, if we have a tree or something, and you're kind of wrapping it around that, then it's going to be a little problematic.
But I'm not, I'm not going around the tree. I'm going to stop it at the tree, start it again at the tree, if, if...
Okay, then you don't need that two feet, the one foot additional variance for the fence then.
And he's agreeing that certain parts of that fence will be two feet in, but others might be, have to go with one foot. So he's agreeing, he's not going to be on the property line. He's already amended that, just the same thing.
Okay, so so basically, you're giving him...
A one-foot variance.
A one, one foot.
No more than a one-foot variance. Some places, he'll, he'll be able to meet the two-feet requirement.
Okay.
So have you talked with your neighbor behind?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so, he's in agreement?
Hundred percent.
Okay. So I just have two questions. There's one piece of a stockade fence in the back of the property. Why, just one piece?
I have no idea why that's there. If you drive by, you'd see there's no stockade fence there. I have no idea why he put that on the survey.
Okay, it's just, it's just bizarre, one piece, you know?
Very bizarre, yeah. Got bored and put it in, huh?
Yep.
Okay, and then what's the electric service box?
Uh, there was a, a pool there at one time that we took down.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is the box still there? Is the service...
The box is still there, yeah. We had a permit for the pool, so.
Okay.
I figured, the electric is legal, I might as well leave it.
Okay. All right, just making sure there was...
Yeah, it's a little random, right?
It's not something you normally see on a survey, that, in a, in a person's yard, so... Okay, um, so, Aziz, you all right?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay. All right, so is, anybody here wishes to speak for or against the request from Richard Scalisi, 47 Circle Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a variance to build a six-foot fence, one foot in from the property line, pursuant to Section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance, and a 24-foot rear line variance for a 320-square-foot existing deck? Okay, seeing none, because we hadn't had a chance to look at the survey last time around, we're going to close in reserve, so, can somebody make a motion to please close in reserve?
Make a motion for closing reserve.
Second.
On favor? Okay, so next month, we'll issue, we'll issue your decision, okay? Thank you for getting us this survey, because that helped us to be clear what you were looking for and what you needed.
Okay, right, thanks so much.
Okay? We'll see you next month.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, item number 11, Appeal 3960, Global, Global Foundries. Global Foundries, 2070 Route 52, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a 20-foot height variance to construct a mechanical space addition to the roof of the building, Fab 10B320B, and a 40-foot height variance for two air scrubber stacks pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On, on favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, the gentleman here for Global Foundries, um...
My name is Robert Newhard with Global Foundries, and I'm here with Michael Callahan, the project manager, and Bruce Tripp, the engineer for the project.
Okay, so, I had the opportunity to go out and do a site visit with new, Mr. Newhard, as I told you guys at the last meeting, and the architectural review board was there as well. Um, and in essence, what Global Foundries is trying to do is to add a second floor of, of space to allow them to upgrade the mechanicals for the existing buildings, so that it can extend the useful life of the buildings. The addition that they are going, going to do is way back in the corner, it's, so, it's while it is in one of the front buildings there from the main entrance on 52, um, opposite, um, Harrigan Road there. It's not, not, that's not Harrigan, that's Lime Hill Road, no.
It, it's off of I Park.[1750.25] It's off of I Park.
Hillen Road, thank you, oh my God, Harrigan is over there.
It's off of West Drive, next to the I Park headquarters.
But, but in essence, from Route 52, all you're going to see is the top of the stacks, okay? You'd really have to go into the property, and even where it is in the property, if you're coming this way from the main entrance, it's this back corner here, so it's gonna fit right in with the existing building. We'll let the Architectural Review Board worry about exactly what it looks like, but in essence, because it is mechanical, the stacks, they have to go by the building code in terms of what they're, what is needed there. So, I didn't see honestly any impact at all. I think it's great that they're extending the useful life of the buildings without having to do major construction over there, so... Comments or questions from board members?
No.
I did a site visit, and the location is so...
So far back.
I mean, it's just, it'll blend in, and nobody will notice it in six months, so...
Yeah, we did renderings and from different angles there.
But again, when you look at the site and you see the layout, I mean, somebody, yeah, so it'll just blend in, so I don't have a problem with that.
So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Global Foundries, 2070 Route 52, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 20-foot height variance to construct a mechanical space addition on the roof of one of their buildings, and a 40-foot height variance for the two air scrubber stacks? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is Appeal number 3960, applicant is Global Foundries, US 2 LLC, requesting an area variance for the building height requirement for the schedule of bulk regulations of the, in the zoning ordinance to allow for the, allow the applicant to complete construction, which would include a building with a parapet measuring 50 feet, eight inches in height. It's located at 2070 Route 52, Hopewell Junction. The property, the zoning distance is I-1, light industrial, resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Hassan, whereas applicant is requesting a 20-foot height variance to construct a mechanical space addition on the roof of the building, Fab 10, building 320B, and a 40-foot height variance for a two air scrubber stacks, and whereas the construction on the site will include a new mechanical equipment platform on Level 2, which would contain a new penthouse of approximate 21,000 square feet to house new equipment to serve the 140 new and replaced tools, tools located in the buildings, new and existing clean room areas, and whereas the second-story addition will house electrical, mechanical, and air abatement system for the exhaust for the post-fab operation that will be located on the first-floor section of the existing building, and whereas, whereas part of that construction will include an emergency power generator and upgrades to the existing loading dock and wastewater collection systems and clean room, and whereas the mechanical space addition will be independent from the existing structure to maintain code compliance, and whereas the vast majority of the building will not be visible, will not be visible to the public from public roadways, and whereas this action is a type-two action under secret, and no further action is required, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on July 28, 2020, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on July 15, 2020, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the granting of the variance, variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, or be a detriment to the property, or detriment to the community, as the property will remain industrial in nature, and the addition will allow the equipment that will extend the life and usefulness of the buildings and the usable space inside. The desired results cannot be achieved by any other means due to the necessity for compliance with health and safety regulations. The variants requested are not, the variances requested are not substantial when considering that the addition will be barely visible from the road, and it is in conformance with other buildings used for similar manufacturing processes, and the proposed area variance will not have an adverse impact, effect, or impact on the physical or environmental conditions evidenced by the fact that this is a type-two action. Now therefore be resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the applicant's request for an area variance for the building height requirement of the schedule of bulk regulations in the zoning ordinance to allow the applicant to complete construction, which include a building with a parapet measuring five, 50 feet, eight inches in height. Need further resolve that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the decision and order to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Call.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries, now you'll just, you'll deal with the Building Department, please.
Yep.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you, thank you for your review, and thank you for the site visit.
Yeah, no problem.
I'll go back by here.
Yeah, you guys are gonna go out this way, please. And you are Tompkins. Okay, so, item number 12, Appeal 3952, Tompkins, Ronald Tompkins, 16 Old Sylvan Lake Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 13-foot sideline variance for a proposed 196-square-foot addition pursuant to Section 194-17 of the bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance, and a 10-foot sideline variance for an as-built shed pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So good evening. We had an opportunity to review, come on up, we had an opportunity to review this last month with you. You were looking to extend, add to your kitchen, to do an addition to your kitchen?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, and so, it's, you know, it's not a very large addition. The issue that we have is that you own the lot next door, and the lot next door is not built on. So we have to ask the question, why not do a lot-line variance? You have other options available to you. So you have the ability to do a lot-line realignment, where you just make your side yard bigger, and then you don't need a variance.
Part, I mean, there's a couple of reasons why not. First of all, the expense. It's more expensive to realign, to realign a lot, and it will also decrease the value of that property while not increasing the value of the lot with the homestead on it. That lot next door is sloped across, so as you're looking at it from the road, it slopes this way. That lower section, or the section closest to my property, is the most level section of it. I don't wanna encroach on that.
So you would be...
And there's already a, there's already a 10-foot variance on the neighbor's property up on top of the hill, so it kinda narrows the choices of house location for that lot when it goes to get built on. For now, I just, I wanna hang on to that property. I mean, maybe someday I'll put a house on that property as well and sell it.
Okay, so what you're saying is by doing the lot-line realignment, I'm trying to not muffle it with the mask?
Yeah, yeah.
By doing, you would actually reduce the buildable area on that second lot because of the topography of that lot. It's limited in terms of where any house could go on there anyway.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Okay. What is the acreage of that lot next door?
They're each an acre and a third.
Okay, so, so again, for the board's consideration, there is...
And if you reduces that one, we may be looking at a variance for that property.
That's what we've...
Now win-win situation.
Right, so, thank you for the explanation, because again, if you can reduce a variance, it's our job to try to get you to do that, so...
Understand.
All right, so, any other comments or questions from the board? That was the only thing I had.
I'm good.
You should have a letter on file too, for the variance on the other side of the property, for the shed.
Say that to him.
I think you...
A letter from who?
Neighbor, the neighbor on the other side. On the other side of the property, there's a pre-existing shed that's been there since 19, I was gonna say 69. It was a former bungalow from the, from the Chelsea Cove at Sylvan Lake. Excuse me. From my neighbor.
Is, what condition is it? Is a shed in if it was built in 1969?
It's in great condition.
Okay, all right.
It's amazing how well Doug Fur holds up. I don't know, have you got a copy of the letter?
If we have the letter, I'll read it into the record, yes.
It wasn't as nice as the other letter that...
Yeah.
They have it here. We'll talk to Sue. She would've been here, but she's having a knee replacement next week and didn't wanna risk it.
Okay, so this is dated June 30th, 2020, from Mrs. Susan Umshard?
Umshide.
Umshide, sorry, okay. 10 Old Sylvan Lake Road, Hopewell Junction, to whom it may concern, I am the owner and reside at 10 Old Sylvan Lake Road, Hopewell Junction, and I have no problem with my neighbor's shed at 16 Old Sylvan Lake Road, Hopewell Junction, being close to my property line. So, thank you for getting the, talking to your neighbor and getting the letter. All right, so, comments or questions from board members?
No, thank you.
All right, and you're with him, so there's no matter of the public here, but is there anyone here to speak? Is there anyone here to speak for or against the request from Ronald Tompkins with a P, by the way? We had our agenda wrong last time.
Yes, yeah.
16 Old Sylvan Lake Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 13-foot sideline variance for a proposed 196-square-foot addition. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Do you wanna go, Ron?
Yep. Appeal number 3962, applicant Ronald Tompkins. Project is a 13-foot sideline variance for a proposed 196-square-foot addition pursuant to the schedule of the bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance, and a 10-foot sideline variance for an as-built shed pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance, the variances, quote unquote. The location is 16 Old Sylvan Lake Road in Hopewell Junction. Resolution offered by zoning board member Rocco Limaton, whereas the applicant is requesting a 13-foot sideline variance for a proposed 196-square-foot addition pursuant to the schedule of the bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance, and a 10-foot sideline variance for an as-built shed pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Whereas this action is a type-two action under secua, and no further action is required, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on July 15, 2020, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals holds a public hearing, held a public hearing on July 28, 2020, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, as this addition is to the existing kitchen and the shed is already existing. The variances requested are not substantial. The proposed area variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. Now therefore be resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the request by Ronald Tompkins for a variance to allow a 13-foot sideline variance for a proposed 196-square-foot addition pursuant to the bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance, and a 10-foot sideline variance for an as-built shed pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Second.
Thank you. So votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries, you're all set.
Thanks so much.
Now you'll deal with the Building Department.
Appreciate you guys making it fairly painless for us. The process.
We try. Okay, so, Jackie, if you don't mind, if we can bring folks in?
Yes.
Now, we have three things, there are three refunds that we'll do while folks are coming in. Actually, I think we can handle all three in one motion, right? We're doing three...
No, I don't, separately, so it's clear.
It's just refunds, it's not, there's no written resolution.
Yeah.
So...
Oh, yeah, cool.
So items number 13, 14, and 15, do I have a motion from the board to approve a refund of all but $5 on each application?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done. Okay, um, I was actually gonna tell her to bring in more than just two applicants, because there's three of them we just took care of, so she can actually bring in the next... Maybe she's, maybe Michelle's doing that now?
Next three.
Yeah, that's, okay.
Well, that's a good start, which one's next?
Yeah, we can, we can get going anyway, so... All right, so we are on item number 6, 15.
16.
16.
16, sorry.
16.
Appeal 3961, Maul, Douglas Maul, 18, Pamela Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a 15-foot sideline variance for a proposed 400-foot square, 400-square-foot proposed detached garage pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. So, Mr. Maul, this is a review. So... I don't think we had, do we, I don't think we had an opportunity to see this one last month, right?
Nope.
This is new, okay. All right, so if, if you don't mind taking us through your request.
Um, I'm looking to put in a 20-by-20 shed, but I guess because it's, the plan has a garage door, they're considered it a detached garage.
Okay, so you have... Where's your, where's your driveway?
Straight up from the, uh...
So, okay, so you have a very wide driveway, that's what I'm seeing.
Hill and Department information on this one.
With the manhole in the middle of it?
Yep.
Large pine foot, 60, 80, 100-foot trees bordered the property, no visual disturbance toward the neighbors, 25, 20 feet prefab concrete slab. So you're looking to put it behind the shed?
Correct, the existing shed there.
And then are you gonna put another... Oh, thank you. Are you gonna put another driveway there? I mean, how are you gonna access it? The doors on the, are, you have on the other side.
Like I said, it's, it's gonna be used as a shed, but because it's got a garage door, you're...
Well, you already have existing sheds on the property, so that's your, part of your issue. You have...
I have one, what's, what's the...
You're gonna be, there's one that says to be removed upon completion of the new shed.
Correct, that 10-by-10 is gonna be, all the contents will be going into the new shed. So that's gonna be removed, so I will have two sheds on the property. But I guess that's, they're classifying that as a detached garage, so what's...
What kind of doors are you gonna have on it? And what kind of...
I'm not sure yet, I'm not even sure what kind of building...
And what kind of floor is it gonna, what kind of floor is it gonna have?
Uh, it's yet to be determined. I guess I'm more here worried about whether I'm gonna get the variance for the, for the setback, and then after that, I'll worry about...
On the survey, you wrote 20-foot by 20-foot prefab concrete slab, so you're putting it on concrete?
That's the plan.
Okay.
Well, if we, in order for us to consider the variance, we have to know what your plan is. You can't say, "I just want a 20-foot variance, and I'll decide later." So we need to know, when we ask questions, you keep saying to be determined, we can't grant a variance for what's going to be determined sometimes.
So then, that's, originally, that's what I'm planning on going with, the slab and the 20-by-20 prefab structure.
And then, if that's what's approved, then that's what you need to put up.
Okay. That can't be changed, say, financial reasons, I can't do something else, I have to change the size smaller, or that can't be...
Grant a variance for that, and then you decide that you wanna put up a thousand-square-foot? No, you can't do that. So, you know, if it changes by a couple inches, one thing, but we need to know what you're requesting the variance for, so yeah, you have to stick to your plans.
But if he's making it smaller, you can make it smaller without needing to come back.
Well, then maybe he doesn't need the variance that we're giving, so if he makes it a 10-by-10...
Now, the sideline variance, either way, no matter what size I put on, is what it's gonna be, or what I would like it to be. The sideline...
Why, why can't it be moved back? I'm not understood, what's behind there?
Especially if it becomes smaller, he doesn't need the same-sized variance.
Right, why, what's between the shed and the pool?
It's, it's like 20 feet wide between there.
I don't have any such, I don't have any measurements on here.
It's a long, narrow, it's a long, you can look at the, it's a long, narrow lot. I can't put anything in the middle of my property, 'cause then...
Do you have a well in septic? Where is your well in septic?
It's on the left side, where the deck, see where the doghouse is? That's where my leach fields are, just past the pool, and then the well, the well is the manhole cover in my driveway.
Oh, okay.
Septic is in between the property on the left and the deck. So that left side there is pretty much useless.
Okay, so, so the garage, or the, whatever, this structure can go back because you wouldn't, it wouldn't be on top of your fields or anything like that, so...
That's why I chose where this existing shed is, is to go behind it, because that's the best for the layout of the property. And I, like I said, I, I'd go with the twenty-by-twenty with the prefab, with, that's the original plan. I guess my question is, what happens if something changes, say I change it to a different type of building, but still same size, you know, do I, how do I adjust for that?
If it's the same type of building, then that's fine. You don't have to go prefab, you want to do stick construction, that's not an issue, it's still twenty-by-twenty on it.
Yeah, well, I know the, I know the sidelines, the sideline is not going to change, like I don't, I don't have the space to come out more. I can go long and narrow, but then it, see how this first shed is?
But see, that's the issue. So if you need four hundred square feet and you change it so it's not going to be twenty by twenty, you want to make it thirty by twelve or something like that, then maybe you don't need the same setback requirements, because it'd be much narrower and you could be further away from the property. So, yeah, you can't, we need to know what you're asking for, but then...
Then this is it, this is what I'm asking for, what is originally on the paper.
Now, that's what you're going to be building. If you're going to build something else, you change your mind and you want to build a fifteen-by-fifteen, then you got to come back and see us, because then we're going to say, "No, you don't need twenty feet, you only need fifteen feet." Because now it's narrower, it's smaller.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, we've got a couple other issues here. So the building department went out and did an inspection, and you have a greenhouse on your property?
Correct.
Okay, was that done with permits?
Nope.
Okay, doesn't appear to meet setbacks, but it's not showing up on your survey?
Nope, I just put that in in April.
So that's another accessory building, so that has to be, goes to whether or not you put up another accessory building on the property.
You also have a playset that does not meet setbacks?
Says who? No one measured?
The building department.
No one measured setbacks?
It's not showing up on your, on here, so we can't even tell you whether it meets setbacks or not. So, how old is this survey? Two thousand and nineteen?
August of last year.
Yeah, August of last year. So...
The swing set needs a permit?
It's not a matter of whether it needs a permit, it's a matter of where it is. It has to meet setbacks, it's a structure. So it has to meet setbacks.
It's only swings, it's four posts and a beam with swings on it, there's no, like, square box, it slides?
The structure.
Okay.
Okay, so it has to be twenty-five feet in, fifty feet in from the back, you know, so it has to meet setbacks.
Oh, I was not aware of that.
What is this doghouse that's on the survey?
I don't know, the surveyor just put it there. It's a doghouse.
There's not a structure there?
Yeah, no, there's a doghouse.
Okay, does that have a variance, or is it, is, is the structure staying?
I wasn't aware that a doghouse needed a structure, it's only as big as this podium.
Anything that's, needs the ground and is, is built on it, is a structure, okay? So, yeah, all that has to meet setbacks, so, um...
Yeah, I think we need a survey because there's, I mean, there are multiple issues and we don't know what we're looking at, even though so, and again, it was done last year, so the, the surveyor can just update it without really too much of a hassle.
But not only that, if you have the greenhouse, that is definitely a structure.
Right.
That's something you built, that's just, it's not a simple doghouse.
And we don't even know where it is.
You can't plead that you didn't think a large building like a greenhouse didn't need a permit, and we cannot proceed with a variance knowing that there's violations on the property, that's the point.
Okay, so how do we go, how do we rectify the other ones before we move forward?
Yes.
Everything has to be cleaned up before you can move forward.
I'm, I'm, that's why I'm here, I'm, I'm...
You need to decide what you want to do and be clear on that, what you want to do with the property.
Well, what's on here is, is what the original plan was.
But again, the greenhouse... You have a greenhouse, you have to deal with now that's evident, and maybe some of these other minor issues. I mean, you're right, the doghouse, you can just pick up and move maybe ten feet in and not have a problem. Same thing with the swing set.
Yeah, that's, that's...
But a greenhouse that looks to be pretty close to the property line, that's another issue.
Yep.
It's a pretty large structure.
Especially because it looks like that greenhouse was, has a significant amount of earth or something underneath it to make it level.
Mm-hmm, yeah, because of the slope of the property.
Yeah, that's, um...
There's a lot of issues there about foundation, whether it's properly supported, whether it's properly fixed to the ground, all those things.
And what is that structure with the ladder going up to it? There's a pole with a chair or something on the top of it?
Looks like a tree stand for deer.
And that's what, that's what it looked like, but you're not hunting on your property, so...
So do you have a tree stand?
Yep.
All right, um...
Yeah, I think I need a survey because, and to show all the structures that you have, and then also have your surveyor do a setback plot on the map itself to clearly show me what the setbacks are, so which your surveyor can do without a problem.
For, for the swing set and the?
No, no, everything, everything that is there, I mean, so that, your surveyor will know exactly what they're looking for.
Well, that's the only two things, because everything else is already on this one.
The place at the greenhouse, the...
That's what I said, the two, the...
And we don't even know the setbacks plot on this, so the new survey will have all the setbacks on it, so...
And they can, he can actually, your surveyor can actually put, place the proposed garage on there, so we can be sure exactly where you're talking about, what ten feet in is.
Yeah, it's important, you got to know where it is, and you got to put it where you say you're going to put it, because when you get your building permit, you're going to certify that you meet those setback requirements. If you don't, you can't come back and say, "Oops, I accidentally put it two feet closer, changed the variance," that's not going to happen. You got to put it where you say you're going to put it and the size you're going to put it, if you don't, you go too far in, you don't get it right, you may be looking at tearing it down.
Okay, but I think we have another issue here, Ray, that he's only allowed one additional accessory structure.
Which is what I was just going to bring up as my next breath, yes.
So if he's got a greenhouse, he, he's not allowed another structure anyway.
That's what I was going to, my next comment is, you got to decide what you want on the property, you got to speak to the building department, see what, you want the greenhouse, do you want the garage, what's going on? Or you have to start over with a, another whole variance to see if you can get it.
So, the shed, so, shed's an accessory structure, correct?
Yes.
And what's the limit for the town code for accessory structures?
It's you're allowed a shed, a garage, and one additional accessory structure.
So then, I have the shed, the additional would be the greenhouse in hypothetical, and then this garage would meet that, so it would cover all three of those bases, no?
Yeah, right, okay. But you have a two-car garage already, at least, on your house.
Correct.
And a shed.
Correct. I have four kids, they have a lot of stuff.
How old are those large pine trees in the front of the house?
Those have been there since nineteen seventy-five, my neighbor planted them.
Because unfortunately, when pine trees die, they leave a large area that not becomes exposed, so, um, so they may be there now, but they're not always going to be there to hide the structures.
I might not always be there either.
Now, this treehouse or whatever you call it, is it secure to the ground, or is it just?
It's on a pole, it looks like.
It's like on a pole, is it?
A treehouse.
Is that considered a structure?
Yeah, it's a structure.
It is, right? It's not an accessory building, though, so that's not the issue, it's just a structure.
What's a structure?
Your tree, your seat, your hunting seat.
I don't know what it is. Is it movable or is it fixed to the ground?
No, it's movable.
Okay.
It's not permanent?
Oh, I mean, it has a ladder. So how, I mean, how do you just, does it have reeds that you move it, or how do you?
Yeah, the ladder's in sections, you just take off a section, it drops down, take off a section, drops down, and portable, it's portable.
Okay, but again, it is, is it just, what's the pole behind it, what's?
It's a pole that was on the property when I moved there. It's a telephone pole, actually.
Oh, it's a telephone pole, okay, you, you just place the structure leaning, your structure is just leaning against a telephone pole?
Yes, that's the intended purpose, yep.
I think it's just a ladder against a pole.
Well, it's more than a ladder.
Yeah, it's more than that.
Yeah, but you're saying you didn't install the pole?
Yeah, no, the pole was there.
All right, I think before we have him do a survey, we should have a little discussion about whether we're going to even, what we're thinking about this garage where it is. I'm, I'm not understanding why it needs to be ten feet from the property. And by the way, this is from the property line and not from the, is that, that's the roadway there? So you're sure this is your property line and not from the edge of pavement?
The, the Xs are the trees, which are on the property line. Ten feet off the property line is where the new structure would like to be.
So do you have a right-of-way on the front of your property, is what I'm asking? Usually there's a ten-foot right-of-way from the edge of pavement to your property.
I'm not driving, I'm not putting a car in that twenty-by-twenty new structure.
That's not what we're asking.
Oh, okay.
I want to make sure that you're actually ten feet off your property line and not ten feet off the edge of pavement for the road.
Correct, yeah, that line is a property line, there's no road there. I'm, I'm not understanding.
There's no road there? So how is access to your, how do you get access to your property?
This is the road, the front of my house, Pamela Road.
Oh, that way, okay.
Under the house, driveway, garage is into the house, patio, deck, pool, driveway comes down.
Okay, all right.
And then there's a little, when I had the driveway done, I put a little walkway to the shed. So this is all, this is all in the back of the house. There's nothing in the front, nothing on this side because of wells, I'm sorry, wells, septic, leach fields, leach fields go this way, and there's pool, that's why I had to put the greenhouse. Everything gets pushed to the sides as close as possibly without going too far close, because the, you know, it's a narrow lot, so I can't, I mean, I'm not going to...
So how close is your, is, is your neighbor's house on the lot that's to the left of your How visible is this structure going to be, aside?
It's not.
Pine trees aside, how visible is it going to be?
You might see, I don't know, the, not much, I mean, their, their house is, is equal to mine, their house is right here. But this is all heavily wooded. Their house is, is pretty much in the same spot as mine is, but it doesn't sit back as big as mine, it, it's a, you know, ranch-style that's here. So it's, it's almost in line with my house from the road setting, um, and yeah, I mean...
I got to go do a site visit on this, it's, it's, the, the way you've got this superimposed on the survey, it's not giving me a sense of what the neighborhood is like, um, so... All right, what's?
Yeah, nothing, nothing, nothing behind the front of my house could be seen from the road, I got Emmadine Pond behind me, I have neighbors that are still at the same with woods, no one can see anything in the back of my house.
Okay, so he just said it's not a garage, so is he allowed a second shed? As his other, with the greenhouse?
With the garage door, we consider it a garage.
Well, I, I agree, and it's got a concrete floor.
That's how we...
So we have to consider it a garage?
That's how we permit it.
Okay.
I have a question, what, what would be a roll-up door? Instead of a garage door, what would a roll-up door be considered?
A garage door could be a roll-up door.
Yeah, it's still...
I don't know, I'm just saying, a garage door opens up in, but a garage, a roll-up door is contained, so I didn't know if that made a difference.
Pretty much the same.
Okay, I, I didn't know what the, didn't say anything on the code or in the forum, so that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, and this is, in the paperwork you've given us, it looks like a garage door.
That's the original plan, everything I had, that was the, the hopes of having that.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the course?
No, I, I need a survey because I don't seem to understand.
We're not ready to go, we need another review in terms of if you're asking for a...
Yeah, I have no...
Probably carrying though.
I, it's not making sense to me, so...
Well, we have the issue with, you can't go forward if there's a violation on the property.
That's true, okay.
So you want me to get a survey to put the greenhouse and the swing set on?
Yes, please.
And the, including the utility pole.
And what?
Because it's not showing up here on the survey.
You want the pole on there too?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not functional, it's stuck in the ground.
Utility poles, it's like your well, it should be shown on the, on the survey.
Like I said, it was there, it's been there, it's been there fifteen years, it's been there since I've been there.
Yeah, but again, it's not showing up on your survey, it's supposed to be on the survey, even if it's any fixed structure.
So then, then you also, so from there, you start with a survey, then you have to determine based on where the greenhouse is, where it's based on where the playset is, whether you're going to move them or leave them at where they are, and the doghouse.
Got it.
All right, whether that doghouse can move.
Understand, yeah.
So that it's, you know, the appropriate amount of feet in, okay? But you do have to go deal with the permit for the greenhouse. I mean, as long as it's not a street, I'm, I'm a lot, it's, it's a lot more doable to, in my mind, but, um, what we have to worry about is not just your use of it, it, but the next person who's going to live here, because it's got a garage door on it, what are they going to, how are they going to use it? So that's what we've got to be concerned about.
I just put a four-hundred-thousand-dollar addition on that house, that ain't going nowhere, they're going to bury me in the backyard.
Okay, so I guess when you put the huge new structure, survey was done, so your surveyor can easily come back and update the survey, so do you think you can have the survey by next meeting, or you need more time?
Next month?
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I can have it in two days.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
All right, so we'll see you again next month for another review.
So I'll put, just to be clear, greenhouse, swing set.
You're with the building department for the greenhouse, you're going to get a survey to show the swing set, any structure on that property, anything that has, it's base on the ground, is a structure, so you've got to show us every structure on, on your survey.
And you were saying about the new proposed shed, also put that on there?
Yes, they can offer, they can actually put it on there so that we can be clear, it's ten feet in from your property line, okay?
This, this survey was done after my addition was done, you see this big L-shaped thing here? So you wanted another survey, you had to pay again for another survey because you wanted this to be, um...
Because you've now put additional structures on your property, okay? And we need to be sure that those structures are in the right places.
But this one's not there yet.
Proposed.
Yeah, they will label it as proposed.
Okay.
Okay? That's, that's not, they do that all the time, that's, it's, they want you to, they want us to see that where you're proposing to put it needs the variance that you're saying it needs.
You tell them what you're doing, he'll know what he needs to do.
Okay, yep.
But you're asking him to update your survey, it's not going to cost you the cost of a whole survey, he's just going to update it.
I know, I know, I know.
Okay, so, he should have, frankly, he should have put some, well, the pole, et cetera, he should have put on there anyway.
No, the, the swing set...
Your greenhouse is new.
No, the swing set and the greenhouse was because of this. I had to feed my family, I put a greenhouse on to feed my family. I put swing set there because there's no camps, and I'm daddy daycare, so...
Okay.
It all happened, you know, in April.
Yep.
Because when this thing went down, I had to make sure my family was looked after.
That's fine. Okay, so we will see you next month.
Good, thanks.
Thank you.
Nope, other door, thank you.
Okay, item number seventeen, appeal three nine six three Rodriguez, Michael Rodriguez, forty-five Hopman Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a five-foot sideline variance and a five-foot right sideline variance for a proposed fifteen-foot, ten-inch, and a forty, five forty-foot in-ground pool pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety-five of the zoning ordinance. Hi, Michael.
Good evening.
So, the first time we're seeing your application, so if you don't mind taking us through why is the pool this way and why not that way, and why that size, and...
Sure, so we are, again, seeking five feet on each side. We are within our HOA setback lines with this. We have, I have four children, don't know if I'm gonna have more, they're all under seven. We can't use a community pool anymore, and as you know, the community is also very crowded. We chose a fiberglass pool for a couple of reasons, it just makes the most financial sense for our family, and then also long-term warranty. We, our neighbors got eight, the fiberglass pools come in predefined sizes. So this size is the la, the largest lengthwise. Widthwise, it's the largest as well. If we were to bring in the length, we're gonna bring in the width, twelve feet. So our neighbors, we actually looked at it tonight, it's very small, I don't feel safe with that to go in on size, so we do want the bigger one for our family, because, you know, they're young kids, they jump, twelve feet is very short. If we turn the pool the other way, I'm looking at less than ten feet from my back door. I do have an autistic child, I'd like to keep it back as far as possible.
Okay.
Um, so that is our propose.
Have you talked to your neighbors about this, or they...
Yep, a lot of our neighbors, we don't, we have some quiet neighbors on one side, so we don't, they're never there anyway. Um, the neighbors to the right and the neighbors to the back, we have mentioned it. I'm sure they'd like to use the pool. It will be fully fenced and also...
No, I see, you, you've actually provided quite a complete application. You've got landscaping in here, which is, we usually have to ask people for it, you've got your fencing, so you've obviously put this together well, so, um... And the building department went out, and there's no visible violations on the property, so that's good. Yeah, you've got very visible backyards over there. If anybody wants to see Ray's report. So, what's the board members?
I'm good.
I mean, if they get HOA approval, it's in their backyard, it's, I think there's a reason...
Motion to advertise?
Yeah, I think there's justification for it, so... So, motion second, on favor?
Aye, aye.
So, um... Will, Jackie, do you have sign, do you have the notices for public hearings for next month?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you can contact the planning, the zoning office in the next day or two, Jackie will give you your instructions, because you do have to get a sign.
Okay.
All right, to post on your property, just so your neighbors are aware of what you're looking to do.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
And then we'll see you next month for your public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay. Since you guys all came in after the last round, the exit door is gonna be right here. I don't know that there's anybody still out there at this point, probably not, but again, the exit is this way. This way you can actually go through, out the side door to the parking lot, or go back around to the front of the building. We've already done all the public hearings for the evening. So tonight, this is just reviews, and these are all new applications, so these are things we haven't seen before, so... What happens is we do a review, and then if we have no further questions, then we, we allow you to go to a public hearing where we then notice your neighbors and allow them to come in at a future meeting, usually next month. But, and then we'll hear from them if they have any concerns about what you're proposing to do. So with that said, item number eighteen, appeal three-nine-six-four Cudon, Sylvia Cudon, five eighty-six Route three seventy-six Hopewell Junction, requesting a twenty-two-foot sideline variance and a thirty-eight-foot rear line variance to build a four hundred and forty square foot garage on the same footprint as the existing garage pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Thank you, good evening, thank you, and thanks for having us. We bought the house that we're now living in, in April last year, with a pre-existing, pre-zoned garage there that is of questionable safety, the side, the actual boards, the, the walls themselves are buckling very slightly, but they're cracking, and the whole garage needs to be replaced. I would like, if I may, to offer some photographs too.
Sure, yep.
The, what we are asking for is...
Actually, we have photographs in our packet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Those are, those are nice colors.
You have them.
No, I have them, sorry, I have, I have the building inspector's report. That's what I have, I will share with everybody what I have.
So the, what we're asking for is to have the same footprint, it'll be the same size, in the same position. And we understand that there are zoning requirements for being further away than this particular garage is from the neighbor, but we, since it's been there, pre-zoning, and it will not change the appearance, we would like it to be the same, both size and position.
I'm not impressed by that block foundation, looking at it, but it certainly has character.
It has character, yes, sir.
I was gonna ask about, are you gonna keep the same color?
Actually, we'll try and make it the same color as the house.
Okay, that's, that's appreciated, we do like, usually your neighbors like to see the color, you know, things that match your house.
Are you, are you one of our neighbors?
We actually have a neighbor, we have a neighbor.
Oh, okay.
And we have our construction guy, Jason, very well.
Um, because they're looking at you as the existing foundation, and this garage is really in pretty sorry shape?
It is.
I have no problem with it, so...
Are you gonna keep it, are you gonna do a block construction or stick construction? Are you gonna, I beg your pardon?
Stick.
Stick, okay.
Okay.
Motion to advertise?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, so again, you're gonna call Jackie to call the zoning office tomorrow or sometime this week? Because you just gotta get a sign to post on three seventy-six there.
Thank you very much.
Okay?
That's it, that's it, we're done.
And then we'll see, we'll see you next month for your public hearing, and then your neighbor can speak. Or, or he can just give you a letter, and you can just bring it, and we'll read it into the record.
We'll, we'll drag him back with us next month.
No problem. Jackie, I'm gonna put the extra, we, we, can we keep these pictures too?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just gonna put them in the file, okay, attaching it to a Ray's report here. Okay, see you next month, guys.
Good night.
All right. Item number nineteen, appeal three-nine-six-five Bayo. We have a Bayo on the agenda, and we have a Mayo on the agenda, exactly, how, how unique is that? John Bayo, one forty-six Milltown Road Homes, is requesting a nineteen-foot sideline variance and a thirty-eight-foot rear line variance to rebuild a four, nope, sorry, I'm on the wrong one. One forty-six Milltown Road Homes is requesting a nineteen-foot sideline variance for a proposed six hundred and twenty-four square foot detached garage pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Wow, we have a lot of garages this evening. All right, so again, Mr. Bayo, we haven't seen you either, so if you could just take us through...
Sure, so I'm looking to build a detached garage to store classic cars, my sons and I like to collect cars. Currently have a two-car garage on the house, which is insufficient for space for the cars we need to store. Prefer not to store them outside, obviously, in the elements, so we're looking to build this detached garage. Given sort of the topography of my property, I live at the top of basically like a hill or a mountain, and it's mostly, most of the property. Given the way it's cut, the location that we've chosen is, is the best spot we could find for access to the driveway to, you know, get as close to meeting to the setbacks and the requirements of the town, but unfortunately, it's just a little bit too close on one side, and I guess news to me, the rear, I didn't think the rear was an issue, but, you know, we're proposing these variants to put in the garage. One thing I'll point out is that you can't see this location from the road, you can't see it from any of the properties around us because of how large the property is, and because of the elevation change from the road to where this will actually be built. So from that perspective, you know, I don't think it'll have much impact. Our neighbors around us are all okay with it as well.
Okay, but do you already, how many structures are on your property?
So we have a shed that, I guess they're telling me is considered a garage because it has no...
Because it's got a garage door.
Yeah, so that, that, that was existing when we purchased the house three years ago. I'm happy to change the door to one that opens out, to make it back to a shed. You know, the previous owner had put that in, I don't know why he chose that door over a different style, but it's easy enough to change. There is an additional shed which I put in about a year and a half ago. I put that one in believing that I was okay under the town code. I spoke to the building department, they told me that you can have an unpermitted shed up to, I believe, a hundred and forty-four square feet.
Right, twelve by twelve.
Yeah, so this was a ten by fourteen, so it was a little bit smaller, but I believed I was, you know, following the proper rules of the town when I put that in.
And the location of that one is fine?
Yeah, that one meets all the setbacks, it's behind the house, there's, there's no issues there.
The problem that I see is that that existing garage, which your survey labels as a garage, by the way...
Yeah, I understand.
Um, is in the front of the house. So we have an issue with the fact that there's a detached garage in the front of the house.
For my time.
Do we know when year that garage was built, when that shed garage, whatever it is, was built?
I believe it was either in the late nineties or early two thousands, it's been there for at least...
Two thousand and two, sorry, shed with garage door, two thousand and two. All right, so, but it was done with a permit, right, so...
There is a permit on file for a shed.
Permit and CC.
So we just gotta clean that up, folks, while we're here, because it's in the front line of the, it's in front of the front of the house?
So one thing I'll point out about the house, and I don't know if this matters, but, you know, everything's kind of like cockeyed to the road, right?
Yeah, I noticed that.
Yeah.
Is it because of the lay of the land?
Because of the lay of the land, I mean, they blasted for six days to put this foundation, and I mean, the whole property's rock.
Okay.
So...
So where are you proposing the new?
So the new garage, you'll see, there's, there's like a parking area near where that...
The stone parking?
Yeah, it's right behind, actually, where that shed is. There's like a parking area, and it, it's very faint in the, in the scan of the survey, but there is a box that says proposed garage.
Yeah, I see it, a proposed twenty-four-foot garage, yeah, so...
Now that you say it, I see it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I couldn't get a good copy.
That is also gonna be in front of the front line of the house.
Yeah.
Yeah, in front of the back of the house, that's what she looks...
No, because the driveway's coming up from that front that way.
Well, maybe I'm not seeing the right thing. Okay. Yep, it also is.
Yeah, start with the driveway.
And the covered porch, and you go straight down, and it's straight in front.
Is that the street right there?
Street is down here.
Street's all the way at the bottom.
What's between that shed and...
He's kinda got a flag lot, he's got a...
Yeah, so actually, there's like a big, bulbous rock outcropping, and that, that little garage is like right up against it, actually.
Is there a way you could join those together?
Not without a lot of rock chipping or blasting.
Right here, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, I, I had thought about putting it like in front of where that garage is, but again, that's really in the front line of the house, so I thought the best compromise I could make, and actually meet, I thought it was meeting, I thought it was behind the house when I sort of laid it out, but that's why I put it off to the side there.
Okay, so the issue is, again, it's another accessory building, you already have a garage, and you have a shed, you have a wood shed adjacent to, right next to the garage. So you're asking for another accessory structure?
Correct.
But you have another shed in the back?
Yeah.
So...
Yeah.
You've got a bigger issue, whether it's even allowed. So I guess the question is, for you to think about, does it make sense to put the two garages, attach them to each other, and then it's not a second accessory structure?
I don't know how that would work.
And then you can actually finish them both the same, so that...
Well, he's entitled to... If I read this correctly, under one ninety-four, one oh seven, he's entitled to one shed, the small shed.
But he's got two sheds.
Then he's attached to a detached garage, then he's entitled to one additional detached structure.
So the wood shed is attached, so that's not a separate structure?
Which is, goes on to say, say, well, he's garage, the unnecessary permitted shed, and the one other detached accessory structure, which is something that's primarily used for residential lots, such as a pool, cabana, playhouse, and workshop.
Right.
So it's not saying another garage or shed.
I mean, would that be a workshop for maintaining cars?
So...
Happy to call the workshop.
You could join them, I mean, you have a lot of gravel parking area there.
Is it possible to expand the existing garage to accommodate?
When you go up and you go to that existing garage shed, we'll call it... To the one side, you have a lot of stone parking, you can't build on that?
That's, it's possible, but isn't that on the front line, like, isn't that part of the problem?
But we're gonna have to give you a variance if we let the other one stay anyways.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta permit, legitimate permit, where you, if somebody got a legitimate permit, put that up. So we're not gonna argue with it, we're just gonna clean it up, so when you go to sell this property, you don't have any, any issue. So if you attach it to that, what we're doing then is enlarging a non-conforming structure, so... But then you're, you finish it nicely, it's, you landscape it, it will blend in much better than having one structure here, another one there, and it's...
But even if you, I don't know what you can do, you can attach it to the front of it, and you have a workshop right behind the garage where you're storing your cars. Just some ideas. I mean, it's hard to envision this, and I can have a little bit of idea of the area and how rocky it can be, but when you just look at this, like, you can't see those rocks that are apparently between that stone parking and that stone driveway that goes around the corner. But, but there seems to be a fair amount of space just there on that stone parking off that side where that stone drive takes off. Which I presume if it's, that must be fairly flat and even.
Um, it's, it's fairly flat, yeah, that's like probably the flattest area on the property, actually.
You could, you could maybe build something attached to that, that...
Yeah, I would just be concerned...
That still doesn't come further to the front of the house, we don't want that to happen when you, what we're talking about.
I see what you're saying, yeah. I'm concerned at how close it would get to the, the rock outcropping that's there already, though. That might be a problem. It's, because it's kind of, the way that shed is built, it's built on like wooden posts, and it's actually raised up off the ground in the front, like, about three feet, and then as the property kind of grades back, then it gets more level to the ground. So I don't know if I could even attach something to it, I don't know if that would like be technically possible, you know, properly, anyway.
They could, they could do that, they could...
You can attach it by a breezeway or something like that, it... People have, people have been creative.
You have, people put up decks, and then they put, they enclose that and make them into rooms that can be up off the ground, that's not a problem.
So you were proposing a single, I see you, no water or electric there, but you're talking about a single-story structure? How high is this garage?
It's twenty-four by twenty-six height, I think, would probably be like twelve or thirteen feet, I forget what the plan says. But it's just literally, I wanna drive cars in there and, and close it.
Right.
You could attach to the existing garage, because the size of this garage is gonna need frost-protected footings. Can't attach it to a floating building without making that for frost-protected.
Well, I thought maybe it was the...
Can't attach a structure to a...
If it doesn't have footing in the back.
A structure that's not frost-protected.
So if the other structure doesn't have the right footings, he can't...
Right, because of the size, it was, it's just a floating structure.
Yeah.
Okay.
So...
These proposals, a seven-hundred, was it? Six hundred and twenty-four square foot building requires frost footings.
Yep.
Anything over five hundred square feet requires frost footings. Frost protection.
How would you know whether the existing structure has that or not?
Well, it's a floating structure, it's on platform.
Okay.
But you could attach to the existing garage and make that a four-car garage. That's a little flat there as well, right?
It is.
Even if you had to bring it up a little bit, it would pin to the rock, and you'd have a different level if it's a little higher.
I would just be concerned about the aesthetic of the house then, because, you know, it's a Dutch colonial, and, you know, it's, it's got a second story over the current garage. So I'd have to build a second story to make it look right, I would think, especially given the Dutch colonial build of the house. I don't think that would look very good.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a picture of your house, so I...
I actually thought about that initially, it was just, but, you know, the, the expense that I would go through to make it look like the rest of the house would force me to add a second story to it, and I just don't think that would be feasible for my budget.
Rick, you gave me a picture of a structure behind the house. Is that like a little cabana or something behind?
It's a bar.
Oh, that's a bar, okay.
Oh, that's where my barbecue is.
Barbecue.
Yeah, that's my barbecue.
Okay, but that's another, that's an accessory structure, so we're done. He's, that's his additional accessory structure. Because that's what he said, a pool, cabana, or whatever it is.
Deck, myself.
It's what?
I would consider that part of the deck.
Part of the deck, yeah.
It's not attached to the house.
No, but it's on the deck.
Deck is attached, that's attached to the deck. It's part of the deck.
Michael, is that how you-
Let me see.
That's how I bought the house. I don't, I don't know. I didn't-
No, I'm not saying it's not, you know.
So it's on the deck, or it's attached to the deck?
It is attached to the deck.
The deck. You stand on the deck, you open the grill, barbecue, and-
Are you just protecting the grill when you're not-
It just, it literally does nothing other than look nice. I mean, you stand under it, maybe the rain gets off of you, you know, when you're barbecuing, if it's pouring or something. That's basically-
Yeah, it's attached to the deck, so.
Yeah.
Part of the deck structure. Um, I think-
As Michael agrees with it.
Yeah, okay, what I would suggest-
By the deck.
What I would suggest is you-
I would say so.
Think about it, come back with some additional ideas, proposals, and then, and if you can consolidate your sheds together or reduce the variances or your structure, so that we can... And again, as long as you go, don't go beyond more in front of the house, as long as you can build behind this garage shed, then that may be okay.
I mean, I, I, you know, given his comments about the foundations, like, I don't know what else I could do in terms of attaching the, the, the proposed building to what's existing there, so I'm not sure what else that's not.
Yeah, when I saw garage, I always think of that frost pudding on it.
Again, I can, it cannot be a garage if I just change the doors, you know.
I understand that.
It's, it's really a shed. It's got a wood floor.
No, I'm just trying to think of ways to ease the request for a variance.
Understood.
So, I don't know. You, you can make the doors to that smaller and, and change the door, and I guess that goes from a garage then to a shed. Would that be correct, Rick? If he changes that door and makes it smaller, I guess the idea is you can't be big enough to take a vehicle through it too, right?
Right.
So you'll probably have to make it smaller, not just make swing doors.
I'm happy to do that. It's easy.
No, we would, we would just accept barn doors.
Would you?
Swing doors, yeah.
So...
It's just, it's a-
Then you would, then you would be okay. You would have that.
It's a town rule in the permit.
Yeah, I see, I see that, yeah.
But if, if he moved this away from the property line and behind the house, behind the front line of the house, then he doesn't even need to come to us.
I don't know how far it goes up, because there's no topography on here, but it is, it is a house that sits on a hill.
Yeah, no, I get it, but-
On Milltown.
Trust me, I don't, I don't wanna be here, right?
Ah, come on.
Since you don't wanna be here, we're gonna make it agony.
Well, you know.
Well, we're just trying to make it easier for you to understand what your options are.
I appreciate that, I do.
Your neighbors can say, "I don't want it there," and then-
No, I understand.
Then what do we do? So...
I understand. I mean, I've spoken to that, but I totally understand.
Might be one we have to do if it's a that. I don't know, we, we went together one at a time, I don't know how, we were gonna have to get permission for me to go by, because we have to go up there by your house. Can't just see that from the road, that's for sure.
Yeah. I mean, both the garages are going to be in front of the house, so that's an issue. That, I think, is not a big deal, but again, you've got and then four structures. You've got a shed, garage, shed, another garage. So you've got four different, I mean, even though the garage and shed are that, they're connected to each other.
One's, it's really more of a wood shed, so it's like a-
Okay, so wood sheds.
Like a lean-to or something, probably better way to say it.
Yeah, it's exactly what it is, lean-to, yeah.
So it's, it's like a lean-to. It's just got, in essence, it's just got a roof inside, and she stores wood in there, so it's not-
So that's not, it's okay. So then, so basically-
So I actually don't think of that as two different structures. To me, that's one structure.
Okay, fine. So...
I, I'm just, I just think you've got other options. I just, you know.
Okay.
I'm not, so that's why we're saying, come back again next month if you still need us.
Okay.
If you can explore what your other options are.
Or if, or if, you know, where your stone drive goes in, again, you have a lot of stone parking there. If you can move it up and get behind the front line of the house, then make it easier. I don't know.
When you, when you say the front line of the house, so like, just so I understand, like, there's, you're looking at the house as a rectangle, and, and the front line, just draw a straight line across, right?
Yes.
It's not like the rear, the backside of the house. It's not, that's not the line, right?
No, no, no. Take, take that front line and just run it across.
Got it. Okay.
Okay? So if you can get it behind, you don't need us.
Okay.
Except for the fact that at some point, you're gonna have to clean up that other garage.
And if you do that, you get it.
Because it's a detached structure in front of the garage, in front of the house.
Can you get it, and if you move it forward, you'll need less of a variance for your-
Yeah, move it right next to the line, yeah.
But I don't know if that's still the front yard. You've got that flag lot scenario going on, so...
All right, so-
Okay. Okay.
Go back, can we reconsider your options? Come again next month, and then let's see what you decide to do. If you decide you don't need us, just let Jackie know, but-
Thank you.
Give us a little bit more options.
I appreciate it.
Okay?
Yeah, you don't wanna come back here, right?
Have a good evening.
All right, item number twenty. Appeal three nine six six Bachnik. Ed Bachnik, thirty-six Lexington Drive, Wapenters Falls, is requesting a forty-eight-foot front yard variance to put a six-foot fence two feet in from the property line pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety-eight of the zoning ordinance. So he actually needs a two-foot variance for the height of the fence, because it's in a front yard.
So, just to clarify, it's, I guess in the eyes of East Fishville, it's my front yard? It's really my backyard?
You have a house with two front yards.
That's right, yeah.
Okay, because you're on Lake Walton Road and Lexington.
That's exactly right, yep.
You're in the Oaks, so, yeah, you're-
Yep.
So, you're not allowed a, a six-foot fence in your front yard, but you've also got a significant tree line there, so why are you looking to put a fence there anyway?
It's not all that significant. Um, I mean-
Some of those houses you can see in their backyard.
Sure, but I mean, the further you go down the Oaks, the thinner it gets. The closer you get, you know, from Joe's Dairy Bar down towards the rail trail, you get, you get closer and closer towards Lake Walton, so it gets thinner and thinner. And I am the second house from the rail trail, so I'm pretty close to Lake Walton. Granted, during the summer, it's, it's not the worst, but in the fall and the winter, it, it's pretty thin. I also have a nine-month-old son, you know, so it's not only privacy, which plays a big portion here, or a big role here. It's also safety. So, uh, there, there's two things at, at play here, and, um, it, it's not that thick between the, the end of my, you know, my yard through the woods to Lake Walton. So you could, you could certainly see, you know, the, the cars going by, and, and it's a busy road. It is.
But, but again, you can accomplish more screening with landscaping.
That's not entirely true. I mean, I, you know, we looked into that, um, and we, we looked into putting trees on there, you know, um, there, there's different types of evergreens that go, go in. Not only does it, you know, pull into my yard and, you know, decrease the amount of property I have, you know, or usable property, I should say. It, it, it's not the same as a fence, right? I mean, to compare like, you know, trees that are next to one another to a, you know, a straight wall of a fence is not fair. The, the fence is, you know, it, it's like this or this, right? Like, I can't see through this. I, I could see through a tree or between trees.
But from the, from a person who drives down Lake Walton Road all the time-
Right.
I like that green view there, as opposed to seeing suddenly a fence in the middle, because you're gonna have to take down some of the trees to be able to foot the fence in, so you're kind of impacting the people's, you know, the use of, or the visual effect along Lake Walton Road, so...
I've discussed this with the people who are gonna put the fence in. The trees that have to come down are minimal, and ones that would come down with hand tools, not, you know, big machinery that has to bring them in trees.
Right, I, I understand that.
These are trees that are as thick as my arm, you know. Just ones to get in the way of putting the fence in. And for someone who lives on the other side of it, not someone who just drives by, I could, I could assure you that the cars are more annoying going by than they are for someone going by to see the house, right?
School buses, you've got all sorts of traffic.
There's a lot of traffic there. There is. And, um, you know, you would think people would slow down, get near the rail trail. They don't. That's a whole other issue, but whatever, you know. Um, it, it's not only a privacy thing, it's a safety thing, and, um-
So you actually looking to clear out your yard then?
Not at all. No, 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 no. It, it goes, looking in my, I don't know, my front yard's my backyard, but let's just call it my backyard, right?
Right.
For my backyard, you know, I have yard, then I have some woods, and then there's Lake Walton. So I'm going on the, between the, the end of my woods and Lake Walton, and I would like to put a privacy fence there. I know my neighbors would also like to do it.
That, that's-
You know, I've spoken to them, they're like, "Oh, we can continue, we can continue this out. That'd be great," right?
That's what worries me. That's what worries me. If we give you the variance, how do we say no to any other of the neighbors along?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not worried about my neighbors. I'm worried about me, though.
Right.
So, um...
And then, and then it just changes the entire view shed of the, of the street there, so...
For someone who's going down Lake Walton, like, what's the view there? My, my backyard? Like, that, I mean, it, it's not a, it's not a lake view. There, there's nothing very grandiose about it, right? It's just, uh, there's still plenty of woods. It's a fence that's not too much taller than I am, and there's plenty of woods behind it.
Well, before you argue that if you put more landscape or something would decrease your usable yard, are you talking about if you had to put more dense screening before your woods? Or why can't the fence go through the middle of your woods? How wide is this woods from your yard to the Lake Walton Road?
I'm, I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
You said you have your, what you call your functional backyard.
Sure.
You have your house, you have your yard, you have woods, then Lake Walton Road.
Yep.
What is the width of the wooded area? You take that fence right down the middle, thereby preserving the view of the trees for people going by, and still provide the safety and privacy that you want. So if you have your house, your yard, then woods is twenty feet wide. Can you go down the middle of it with a fence?
Well, I, I guess I would ask, what, what's the number that you're comfortable with where it, it preserves the-
I'm just throwing out a suggestion to see if you can get what you want. I'm asking a question. I'm not-
Yeah, no, am I comfortable with pulling it further back? Of course, yes. I, I just don't know, like, what is that number, though? I mean, I guess that's, that's my question back to you, respectfully.
Well, I'm not sure. We tell you what that number is, and you, what are you comfortable with that you propose, and then we can decide whether or not that's acceptable.
I mean, arbitrarily say, we'll go ten feet further back, right? I, I, I'm not trying to make this confrontational. I'm, I'm just-
I know, but you're getting some pushback.
Sure.
For what you wanna do. I'm making a suggestion that if there's another proposal you wanna do, by asking the question, "How much space do you have?" Because I presume in that, that wooded area, I don't know how wide it is.
That's probably like-
I asked you that question. I haven't got an answer, but that may be a way that you can get the best without the pushback that you're getting.
Okay.
Or-
I'm suggesting that you consider that, to come back with another proposal.
Or you do plantings within that wooded area. That's why I asked if you were clearing your whole yard. If you were clearing your whole yard, and you really needed usable space, because you were gonna put a pool in or whatever, that's a different story. Then you're just saying you're still keeping woods there. So if you're keeping woods there, why not do some more plantings within the woods? And you, again, accomplish more screening more naturally, and it's a, still a, a nice look for both you and for the, the people on Lake Walton.
Well, I'll still say that the, the screening between more woods and a fence are two different things, right? I mean, I, I think we could all agree on that, right? Like, I, I can't see through this. I could see through trees, right? And it's a very busy road. I'd like to have a fence there. It would block not only the visual, it would help with sound and the safety factor beyond it. Like, I, I can't hammer that home enough. I have a nine-month-old. He's only gonna grow up on this. I grew up in this town. I've lived here my whole life, right? I have Stormville and Hopeville. I've lived here since I was five. Um, I love this town. I do. But Lake Walton's a very busy road. I would like to be protected by it. I don't think that's that big of an ask. Now, if pulling that back is the solution, I'm okay with that. I, I don't think that woods provide the same safety that a fence does, though.
And, I mean, how long have you lived here?
Uh, in the town or in this house?
No, in this, at this house, in this lot.
Uh, it'll be three years this summer.
Okay, so you bought this lot knowing you backed up onto Lake Walton Road?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I just-
Well, I mean, we, we, we all learn things as we live in places, I mean.
Sure, no, I, I-
So that's why I suggest you come back. And one of the things that chair is not really mentioned, I get concerned, because, yeah, the neighbors start doing it, and you have a bunch of six-foot-high fences running for an extended length. That creates actually a tunnel effect for drivers, which is not always that safe.
Right.
What is the tunnel effect?
Well, you're not paying attention to what's on either side, because this is all you're looking at. So you're going down the road, and maybe you have your three neighbors doing it, maybe, so you have six hundred feet, eight hundred feet of, of this, and then there's something that comes around the corner that you, the drivers don't see that comes around, whether it's a deer or, or a child or something, that's a tunnel effect.
Well, there, there wouldn't be a child coming around the corner with a fence there, though, right? I mean-
Wherever the fence, wherever the fence ends is what you say.
Where the fence ends, coming around the corner with a fence. Look at, that's not helpful. Trying to explain something to you. Well, it's not.
Yep.
Childs, something can come around the corner of a fence, right?
Trying to prevent a child from coming into Lake Walton. My child, right?
Well, again, I'm making a suggestion to you to come back with something. I'm trying to assist you to-
I appreciate it. I'm not trying to be conversati- I'm sorry. I'm not trying to be confrontational here. I'm, I'm trying to understand the whole process here.
But I'm trying to explain an issue with you, and I explained to you what a tunnel effect is. So that's something for us to consider as well, is the safety of the drivers going down. So I, again, you're getting pushed back.
Okay.
You can proceed with what you want and see what happens with that, but if you lose, you lose, so-
This is a front yard.
Or you wanna make a, another suggestion as to what may be an appropriate request. That's up to you.
This is a front yard. For a six-foot fence-
Okay.
It belongs behind that front line of your house, so for you, really, it would be the rear line of your house to have a six-foot fence. It's not just two feet in from the property line, because it's a fence. So that's, your issue is you, whatever, I mean, we put forty-eight foot feet. I don't know where the, what the, frankly, the distance is to your front of your house. Uh, toward the back of your, the rear line of your house. That's really what your variance is. You're not allowed a six-foot fence in your, in your front yard. So what you're asking for is not allowed.
Okay.
So that's why we're saying, can you, instead of you putting up a white vinyl fence, and your neighbor putting up a brown cedar fence, and somebody else putting up a third six-foot fence, and then suddenly we've got this mesh mash of fences along there, because you got one, then all of a sudden, your neighbors want them because you got one. That's what we're trying to prevent. So is there a means that you can do something? Are you proposing landscaping in front of it? What are you proposing? Because it's not allowed, so let's get to what can we work on.
I'd like to find a happy medium. I, I would. And, um, you know, if that's, you know, right now, we're two feet off the property line, right? So if that's pulling it back, I don't know, you know, twenty feet, so there's some trees, but it's trees, fence, trees, my yard.
And then you put up a colored fence that blends in with the woods and stuff?
Well-
It becomes a lot easier for the board to consider your-
Sure. Uh, the color of the fence is a, like a taupe type color. It's the most natural one I could get in the vinyl one.
Is it vinyl or is it wood?
It's vinyl, not wood. Um, I think it's, um, like a beige type, taupey color. Like, it, it's not a bright white by, by any stretch. But if reapplying and pulling it back i- is the best course of action, I'm happy to do that. Um, if you feel like that would be the best course of action. Really, for me, it's, it's to have the fence over there. It, it's not just privacy, it's safety as well. And, and, and I would ask what your recommendation is back from Lake Walton on what you've-
I don't know. I don't know the property. I'd have to go by it. And again, it's not up to us to make a recommendation. You have some pushback. You hear the concerns of the board. So what do you propose to try to address those? And I understand your concerns. I'm not arguing with you about your concerns. I understand Lake Walton's a busy road. You know, one kid's running out. You may not appreciate the noise. I understand that. And, you know, but to a certain extent, that's the piece you bought. I mean, you know-
Sure.
I hear a lot of, of parkway noise at my house, but then I can go behind my house, and it's pretty much blocked. Your, your backyard is where you wanna recreate with your family. So I can understand that, but you gotta see whether you can come up with a, another plan that's more helpful, I guess is the word that I wanna use.
And you have to be sensitive to the fact that people are riding their bikes along there, people getting, trying to get to the rail trail. They're running and walking along there, so you have a lot of extra use along there, so you're bringing it right to the two feet of the property line. I, I get it, it's your property, okay? But again, like, Mike, like Jim said about the tunnel effect, you're then limiting where people can actually be, walking along the side there. So...
Just, that's fine. I'll, I'll re-propose this, but, um, the tunnel effect thing, I mean, we're, we're pretty far off the road.
I'm not familiar with it, so I don't know.
At two feet off the property line?
Yeah.
You're gonna be, what, twelve feet off the road?
That's right.
That's not very far off the road. That's not very far off the road.
Which slopes down away from the road. So, what feels like a six-foot fence is really like a four-foot fence from the road.
So, it's not gonna give you any noise savings? It's not gonna give you any privacy savings? So, your arguments just went out the window.
No, that's not entirely true.
Your safety didn't, so, you know, that I still get.
Anything more than zero is better, right? So, it's not nothing. Listen, I'd build a 20-foot fence if I could, but that's not realistic.
And this particular fence is just going straight across. So, you know, your neighbors don't have a fence right now, so kids can run around. I mean, there's, I don't know what part of safety is having a straight fence.
Sure, a kid could run around it, but with my property, it's pretty blocked off. I mean, yeah, I mean, I could say that about a lot of fences. At some point, you can get around it, right? I mean, but it could be a 300-yard-wide fence, at some point, you can get around it.
But this is just a 50-feet, basically, straight across fence, and it's, you know, again, I don't know...
If the solution is to bring it in, I'm happy to redo it here. I'm not trying to be confrontational, I assure you. I just really wanna understand what the best course of action is here.
Yeah, I would suggest that you go back, think about it, look at the lay of the land, and figure out with the slope that's coming down and saying, okay, well, this is what I, how far in I can go. And this is the, and maybe somebody can do a site visit and see if, you know, if they have any recommendations. But, I mean, right now, you're basically two feet from Lake Walton, which is a very busy road. It's like, basically, two feet is only that small, small area.
But there is a right-of-way, so you're probably more like 12 feet.
Correct, correct, exactly.
So...
But still, I mean, Lake Walton is a pretty busy road.
Not just two feet off the road, yeah, okay.
Correct.
All right, so, we need to see what you're gonna propose.
Okay.
All right, so we'll see you again next month?
All right.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Item number 21, Appeal 3967, Web, Michael Webb, Six Logan's Way, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 40-foot rear line variance for an accessory structure, a pool pavilion, pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Hi.
Hello.
So, again, first time we're seeing your application. If you could take us through, you have a pool there now?
Right.
We do.
Okay.
So, in the back of the house where the pool is, to get from the other side of the pool to, you know, there's not a lot of property between the back part of the pool and the rear part of the property. On the right side that is closest to West Hook, there's a lot of rock that comes through and then a huge drop-off. So, we don't have enough room even on that side to meet either of the setbacks from the rear or maybe the side. But, and then on the other side, what we wanted, the reason why we wanted to put it back there is because that allows us still access to the fence, excuse me, the gate that is on the driveway side of the house. And then there's some yard there, but that's really the only spot that we have in the backyard to put the structure.
You have walls in your backyard with chain-link fence on top of them, right?
We have, no. There's the chain-link fence that's in the ground.
Is what?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're talking about on the side, yes.
Yeah, there's something back there.
So, that, that is on the West Hook side of the house as you're facing up. So, there's, the property comes up, there's a wall with the chain-link on the top, and then there's two walls, that's where the garden is.
Yeah. One of the, one of the things when we do this project, we would really like to switch that chain-link fence with...
Yes.
The matching fence that goes around the rest of the property.
What, who put the walls there? Were they part of the development in the first place because they're retaining walls and they're to protect your backyard there to give you more usable space? Or you guys put those in there?
I think it was the usable space, right?
Right, yep. Because this would create an issue where they would then be putting a fence on top of a wall and we're then way beyond six feet. So, how tall is the fence that's up there now?
I think the fence is...
Standard four-foot fence.
Four foot? And then how tall are the retaining walls?
The wall goes from...
Like, start at the bottom wall?
Sloping so from...
Yeah, I think it goes from about two and a half.
Oh, I would go eight to 10 inches, about two or five feet.
I don't know, I haven't measured it.
Yeah, I guess...
That's a lot more than eight to 10 inches.
But again, you're saying that from what, at some point?
At the low point, so at the high point, how tall is it?
Yeah, about five feet.
It's up, but it goes up, let's say, five and a half feet.
So, five and a half feet puts a four-foot fence on top of that, and you're at nine and a half feet of fencing.
Oh, we'll put up whatever it is that's...
Yeah, we can change any of that, that's not a problem.
And the reason you wanna put any fencing up there at all, or the reason there is fencing there is because you don't want somebody falling down from there, or what's the...
Well, it's, I mean, we, there, it's really the access to the pool. We wanted to make sure that all of the fencing hooked in around the pool itself.
That's the fence that goes around the pool.
Right.
So, you're required to have some fence in there.
So, you have a totally different fence around your pool though?
So, there's, there's chain-link in the back, and there's aluminum on the sides and in the front, and then chain-link on the back, and then comes around that one side to enclose that.
I guess we need to be careful what we're calling chain-link because chain-link is really not allowed in the town. So, it looks to me like you've got some...
It's not chain-link, yeah, this is...
It's not chain-link.
No, no, it's more like wrought iron.
I was gonna say, we got the approval for it, so...
So, it's like a wrought iron kind of a thing.
I mean, these are...
Wrought iron?
This is a nice decorative fence.
Right, right.
That's not chain-link.
Yeah.
We apologize.
Oh, okay, just...
Yeah, so, we'd like to keep that same, it's not wrought iron, but whatever that fence is.
The aluminum, right.
Yeah, aluminum, yeah.
That's not what's going all the way around.
No, but that's on the other side, and so that's what they, that's a different type of fence, exactly. That's more like, it looks to me like it's just securing it so nobody falls off the cliff there, you know, the wall.
Yeah, it looks like regular pool fence.
Right.
Aluminum fencing.
Although, I'm not too sure about that ladder hanging on that fence. Helping the decorative look. I'm just teasing you, just teasing you.
It's in there back. I'm not worried about that one.
Yes, see me smiling behind the mask, I'm sorry.
So, we have, so we have to deal with this because we're talking, again, something is, that's gonna end up being seven to nine and a half feet tall.
Well, I mean, that's...
Well, again, that's a retaining wall to, you know, create a...
But is that, we're calling the chain-link part, is that part of the fence you're required to have around the pool?
It is.
Having around pool?
Right.
That's the issue that we have, they have to protect it.
They have to have a four-foot, okay.
They have to have...
So, Rick, you would look, I'm sorry, Rick, you would look at that differently because it's required to be around the pool? It's, I'm reading your concern, that says seven to eight feet high, so...
Could be brought in, I don't know if it needs to be on top of the wall.
Okay.
Was the wall to make the ground a bigger level?
You need what?
You need a four-foot barrier around the pool, self-closing, self-latching gates.
And if we need to pull it in too, that's my two.
When it's on the wall, when it's on top of the wall, then you just...
It's not that big a deal, isn't your plan on changing it?
Yeah, and it's really more the grading of the yard there. It kinda, you know, it's up higher, then it goes down lower, and then it comes back up again, so...
So, what's the size of this proposed building that you're talking about here?
I don't have it off the top of my head.
I'm sorry, we didn't keep it public for ourselves, I apologize.
I mean, it looks like each end is at least 15 feet.
Yeah.
If that's 10 feet, it's gonna be at least 15, probably even closer to 20.
No, it's like 12 plus something, 12 and change.
Thank you.
I think it's more than 12.
Well, no, it says up here 12.
Yeah, so it's, it's 12 feet on each end.
12 plus.
Yeah, so each of these...
Yes.
Are 12?
So, 12 feet that way, and then, but how, ultimately, how long?
And then it's...
What are the walls? How far is each?
Right here?
It's 14.
So, this is 14. And then, I don't know what that...
And that's about 14 again.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then 14 on the other side.
The other side would be 14 again, so we think the middle is 14 too?
And then the angle is about...
I think it's a 45-degree angle.
Yeah, 45, so that's another 14, that's it. It's almost 14, 16.
The, the, the way that the house is situated, it's up on a hill that you can't, from the road, you can't see into the backyard at all. There is also another...
From either road?
From either road, yeah.
Yeah, you can't really, you can't really see from that road up into this portion. You can only see that, that other end that we were talking about before.
Correct. And then there's, there's also a rock burn between us and our neighbor, so that's an additional four feet where, and then their, their actual backyard is sunken.
Goes down, yeah.
So, there's a, on our end, it's four feet high, on their end, it's, let's say, 15 feet.
Yeah.
So, if there was a water balloon fight, we would win.
I'm a little familiar with the house, so I understand the saying.
And then in the back, it's all woods, there's...
So, I mean, things, the only thing issue is up here is a 40-foot rear line variance for the fence for us.
We tried to pull it as far forward from the back as we could too, so we're pulling it over the part of the existing patio.
Who's behind you going, so who's impacted most by this 10-foot variance? By the 40-foot variance, sorry, the 10-foot?
So, right behind, you know, so of course, our, our house is here. Right behind here is all woods. The people who own this, their house is on the corner of Fox Run and West Hook. Here, there's, the other property is really more up here, there's the shed, and then their house is over here.
You're not kidding, it's not visible because those are also then off the hill as well?
You can't, um, yeah, no, you can't see.
I know, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to adjourn.
Say again?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll see you next month.
All right, thank you.
If you can, talk to your neighbors, though, make sure they're on board with this.
Absolutely, I'll call you, okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, you gotta call Jackie tomorrow or so, and she'll give you the instructions for your sign. You're gonna need two signs.
Two signs, yeah.
Okay.
You're on a corner lot, exactly, okay?
Need the square footage.
And last, sorry, ma'am. Item number two, Appeal 3968, Mayo, not Baio, but Mayo. Anthony Mayo, Eight Pine Brook, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 13-foot sideline variance for a proposed 380-square-foot detached garage. That's all you want?
That's it, that will be my bedroom.
All right, really quick, Anthony, take us through it. What are you, what are we doing here?
Because of my property, my driveway, I can't put the garage on the other side, so it's gotta go there, and unfortunately, it's gonna be closer to my neighbor's line. And it's gonna sit back, so it's not, and I got woods behind me, and it's not really affecting anybody's view.
I guess the first question is, why can't you attach it to the house?
I probably could, but it would be a lot of work. I have a lot of trees in there, and then, and then I have an outside cooking area that's on the inside of that garage. It would be a lot of work, trust me.
Okay. All I have for a survey is...
Yeah, I have this here, no, I have this here.
Oh. Hold on, there's another one here, let's look at this. So, it's past the house on the side. How close is your, is your neighbor's house on that side?
Close, I mean, you know, my driveway's...
Have you talked with them about this?
Excuse me?
Have you talked with them about this?
Oh, absolutely, he's cool, he's good with it, yeah. Because it's not affecting his view at all, you know.
It might actually give him more privacy.
Well, he just put a pool in, so it really would...
It actually would give him more privacy because, you know, so, I think, yeah, I think as long as he's on board with it, I, I don't, I'm not seeing a concern. It's the right size, it's one-story?
Okay, yes, okay.
One-story?
Yes, just...
No electric, no water?
No.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
That's it, I'm out, it's in here, come on. Why, you wanna hang out?
No, we're, we can take a while.